Okay, everyone, they said that they got the livestream ready, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. We have a lot of public comment forums, so just, um, we were just clarifying some logistics and things like that. Let's see. I'd like to call to order, please, the Board of Education meeting for February 22nd, 2022, at 6:30 PM in Celine Middle School. Welcome. If everyone could all please rise for our pledge of allegiance, our flag is over here on the stage.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And again, welcome to Celine Middle School. We're happy to be here and to allow some, some additional room for spacing for our audience. Um, I just wanted to do a quick call out, really quick, uh, for Public Schools Week, and thank all of our staff in Celine Area Schools for being proud public education servants. Thank you very much. Um, we are going to start with the ceremonial oath of our newest trustee, Dr. David Howard, Hayward, I'm sorry, Dr. David Hayward. If you could please approach Betty, and we would really like to invite David's family to join him. Yeah, and if we could, that's a, that's a good idea. Um, if we can kind of light that area a little bit more, if that's possible, that would be great, or if you want to move in closer to the, the middle.
So as a notary for the state of Michigan, I'm honored to be able to administer this oath to our newest trustee.
David Hayward. I do solemnly swear- That I will support the Constitution of the United States- That I will support the Constitution of the United States- And the Constitution of this state- And the Constitution of this state- And that I will faithfully discharge the duties- And I will faithfully discharge the duties- Of the Office of Member- Of the Office of Member- Of the Board of Education- Of the Board of Education- Of Celine Area Schools- Of Celine Area Schools- Washtenaw County, Michigan- Washtenaw County, Michigan- According to the best of my abilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Betty, and a warm welcome to you, David, and thank you to your family for being a part of this. Um, being a Board of Education trustee is a lot of work and, and definitely comes with that need for family support. So, thank you very much for coming, and, um, welcome to the group. Um, I'd like to now move to the first, uh, section for public comment, please. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes, or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic, so if there are any more yellow forms in the audience, if you could please give those to Betty, that would be great. Um, the first public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one half hour, 30 minutes normally, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for any other comment. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public, the public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make attacks, make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. Um, I do have quite a bit of public comment. I wanted to thank you in advance for your professionalism and your courtesy, and allowing each member who submitted a form to their full three minutes, if they would like to have that full three minutes uninterrupted. I know that we have, um, a lot of, a lot of passions around our topics tonight, and we want to be respectful of every single individual that comes up to our podium, um, particularly our students who will start us off.
Uh, so I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and extended public comment beyond the usual 30 minutes to allow that all members of the public speak, be able to speak before the, um, before proceeding with the meeting.
Okay, Susan would like to make a motion. Um, we would need a second to discuss and then to vote. Second. Candace, thank you. Oh, and one, one thing we were gonna try tonight, too, especially in this large space, um, if, if someone's making a motion or a second, if you can kind of yell out, um, Jones, second, et cetera, that would really help me, and I know Betty, Betty's over there as reporting secretary as well, so, so thank you. So, motion made by Eastup, uh, second by Jones, um, and would anyone like to have a discussion on that, on that point?
Just to get a sense of how, what, what we have in store for us, how many, um, statements do you have, or cards do you have at this point?
Um, I can count these, I think we're at about 20, and Betty has a stack over there. Betty, do you know how many you have? Okay, so we do have some folks that did request to go second public comment, how many of those do you have? Oh, right. Okay, so we have a three in addition, and let me count these.
So we would only take everybody who submitted those forms, because we're already, already at the point, um, so it would be the ones who wanted to speak to agenda items only.
I thought about 20, we have 19. So, I, I'm sorry, Susan, were you saying then anything that the individuals that did want to go later would go later, and that we would also take additional public comment like we normally would throughout the, um, throughout the time until Betty brings those to me for the second public comment? Or are you saying to negate second public comment?
No, we would absolutely continue second public comment.
Okay, I just, I just wanted, wanted to be clear on the procedure.
So it would be our current forms that we have up here.
Okay, all right, understood. So, the, the motion on the table from, uh, trustee Eastup is to read, allow public comment for the 19 individuals that I have in my stack here, and the second was by, uh, Secretary Jones, is there any other discussion? Okay. Um, let me take a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries 7-0. Okay, so we are going to start with two students, Lorian, Lorian C. If you can please approach the podium. Uh, Lorian, C-S-I-E-H. Lorian, I hope I, I pronounced her last name correctly, it's been a long time since I saw you, I think preschool or, or thereabouts. Um, so you're our first public speaker, so there's a button right on there, and if you hit the push button, it'll, um, illuminate to green, and that means your mic is on, do you want to give it a try? Okay. Um, so this is Secretary Jones, and she's our timer, so what happens is you'll have three minutes to say whatever you'd like to say. When you see her put up a yellow card, that means you have 30 seconds left, so you'll want to complete your thought, and then when you see the red card, you should, um, you should finish your sentence, and you'll be all set. And then you can just toggle the, um, the mic off when you're done. Okay, are you all set? Okay, go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Hi, I'm a Celine student, and I want to address mandatory masking in the schools as someone in the room. People all around us are at risk, including close friends and family. Many who have to attend the schools every day are at risk. By putting us in an environment where we have to be close contacts with unmasked people, you're taking away our choice to be safe. Especially since we no longer have contact tracing, it makes it unbelievably easy to unknowingly get or give COVID. Things like assigned seating, which is present, which is present in nearly every class of mine, and group work don't allow you to distance yourself or make yourself sick. From what I can gauge, at least a third of students in my classes and in the fall is still, follow proper masking guidelines. If masks are to come off, then even with special accommodations, there will be no way to avoid being near unmasked people if a student wants to do so. I know I don't speak for every student, and there are many that feel differently. However, for many of your students, taking away mandatory masking will be scary, with or without loved ones at risk. We were scared when the cases spiked in January, and this could be just as bad. The pandemic's been hard, we all know that. In the fall, many were concerned about the spread of COVID, so you took cautionary measures. If the cases are right now higher than they were in the fall, why would you remove well-thought-out and recent COVID precautions? I know it can be hard or uncomfortable for some kids to wear masks, but I think that each and every one of them can hold out a little bit longer to protect those around them. COVID may not ever go away for good, but until the cases can reliably stay at a manageable mouth, we should stay on the safe side. The existing plan is reasonable based on statistics and numbers, and based on statistics and numbers, which are the most dependable and informative. So keep the masks. Do this for your students, for your people, to keep them safe.
Thank you, Lorian, you're very, you're very brave, we always appreciate having students at our board meetings. Um, our next student, um, is our little hornet, Lerial. And Lerial, you can, you can adjust that microphone down, and you can stand on the side so we can see you if you'd like. Whenever you're ready.
And that, it definitely isn't as fun as in person. Another reason why we need masks is that, okay, and many other people would feel very unsafe without masks. Like, imagine if you were doing group work with five other people who may or may not have some super contagious COVID, and they were breathing all over you and your work. I don't think any of us would like that, so we should give masks. Also, it's not that bad to wear masks anyway, so why not, huh, change something else to add on? COVID is especially dangerous for some kids, like me and my brother, who, whose immune system doesn't make all the antibodies that it's supposed to make. We also can't social distance since, since at school because of group work and partner work, so masks are the best choice to protect us. I love my new in-person class, and I don't, didn't want to have, have to leave it, it just because, because some people are, are letting people decide if, if they wear masks. Please, it's just make a plant, and that protects us most of all, all so that we can learn and, and be with, uh, our friends without having to worry.
Thank you. Thank you, Lerial, it's very, very brave to go to the podium and, and do public speaking. Thank you very much. Um, that concludes our student forms that I have. Um, our next, our next community member that would like to speak is Arlita Greer, uh, former parent and committee member of the Celine Area Schools, DEIAC. And Arlita, um, the same rules apply to Lorian and Lerial and you moving forward, thank you very much. Um, if you just toggle the mic on whenever you're ready.
Dear Celine Area School Administrator and School Board Members, As Celine Area School reviews its Continue to Learn Plan, CTLP, the Celine Area Schools' Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Committee, the DEIAC, advises the district to first and foremost consider impacts on the most vulnerable student and community populations. The DEIAC is charged with ensuring all students have an equal opportunity to safely and fully participate. Changes to the CTLP could disproportionately impact the full participation of certain marginalized populations, such as students and staff with medical vulnerabilities, students with disabilities, students in lower socioeconomic status, and Black, Indigenous, and people of color in the educational community. Therefore, we recommend, any planned changes, consider the potential physical and mental health impacts on those students, staff, and community populations that are known to be disproportionately at risk. That public and mental health data and recommendations are taken into consideration when reviewing the CTLP, and that mitigations and accommodations are provided, such as K95 masks, spacing, and other recommended supports for groups that are known to be disproportionately at risk. We would like to applaud the district for the successful development and implementation of the CTLP. As we have seen over the course of the past year, this plan has successfully enabled our students and staff to safely return to and remain in the classroom. We advise the district to continue making decisions based on the best and most current available science, including federal, state, and county health department guidelines and recommendations. The Centers for Disease Control, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and the Washtenaw County Health Department continue to strongly recommend universal masking in the K through 12 educational settings. We again urge the district to make these decisions with strict consideration for and acknowledgement of the district's stated commitment to equity and inclusivity. We thank you for all your hard work and thoughtfulness as we continue to support our students, staff, and the community through this pandemic. Sincerely, the Celine Area Schools' Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Committee.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. Next, we have Cory Bello, parent. Oh, okay, so, um, asking for a heads up, uh, on deck, there we go. Uh, Kevin Sulak, parent, is on, on deck. Never been a sports announcer. There you go. Cory, whenever you're ready. I'm sorry, Cory, is your mic on?
Oh, it was.
Now it is, thank you. Okay, perfect, thank you, you can, you can restart whenever you're ready.
Okay. I'm Cory Bello, and I am here to read a message from a parent who was unable to attend tonight. Hello, Superintendent and Board of Ed members. I apologize for not being present for this meeting. I am, I am unable to attend due to childcare, and being honest, I am just not that brave. Please forgive me. Maybe it is wrong of me to ask you to be brave for my kid when I am not. I hope that doesn't make me a bad person. I am a single mother of a very sick son. He has multiple disabilities and medical illnesses. He is severely immunocompromised. My son loves school. He does very well in his classes, and with all the supports he has in place. If he is no longer protected with masks at school, I have no idea what I will do. I work full-time around my son's school schedule, I am his sole provider and caregiver. If I can't work, I don't know what will happen to us. My son's reality is terrifying on the best of days. When I spin out of control, it helps me to write. I write poems. While they are not written, well-written by any means, it helps me. I wrote this one for all of you. It isn't very good, but it is how I feel. What will you do if my child dies? Will you look to the sky and say, "Fly high"? What will you feel if he never again opens his eyes? Will you grieve with me? Where will you be if my child dies? Will you attend the funeral? What will you say if my child dies? Will you apologize? Shh, don't answer. Instead, you say to me, "What will you say when we help your child live"? I will say, "God bless you." Please protect my boy. Signed, a cowardly and desperate mother." Thank you.
Okay, um, Cory, thank you for your feedback. I, I, I did want to, um, point out, because I had a discussion, Megan Gunnarson, are you still in the audience? Okay, excellent. Um, so we were having a conversation, just to kind of bring everybody up to speed, over here, because, um, on December 14th of last year, Neola passed down a policy change to our public comment policy that disallowed individuals to speak for other individuals. It can be seen as item D on the public comment form, so we were having a conversation with Megan because she had registered, um, for a friend, so we had a conversation. Um, when Cory filled out the form, Cory, you filled it out for yourself, and I, I didn't know, or I would've had a conversation with you, so because we allowed Cory to do that, Megan, we're going to allow, allow you to do that as well. And so we'll just kind of, kind of note, just to, just to be equitable, um, we'll, we'll note for the team that we did have a change in that policy on December 14th, so in the future, we'll be sure to maybe flag that ahead of time for individuals who, who might not know that. Um, so Cory, thank you for your comments. Kevin Sulak is up next, hi Kevin, and Adam Davis is on deck. Kevin, whenever you're ready.
Oh, there we go. Good evening, esteemed Board of Education members and Superintendent Latch. Please protect our children. The actual guidelines from the Michigan Health Department state that they are to assess each county and district's particular circumstances. Our circumstances are that we are a high transmission area. Please protect our children. Currently, our numbers are plummeting, masks are one of the reasons why. If you decide to remove them too soon, you risk the numbers jumping back up. Please protect our children. I ask you to consider the health and livelihood of all students, parents, and the whole community. Please protect our students. And please follow the recommendations of science and health professionals. I will keep it brief, I think the, the last speaker really hit it on the head, as far as what will we do when somebody else's child is deathly ill or worse? Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, we have Adam Davis up next, and on deck is Raylin Davis. Uh, Adam, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Am I allowed to remove my mask up here?
Uh, sure.
Thank you so much. All right, uh, the longer this goes on, the more I have to say, so I'm glad that I'm able to get this out now. The board does not allow anonymous content, comments, and I request the board to emphasize that where the form says required, it represents the person whose words are spoken in front of their public body. So if you're going to allow individuals to speak for others, please require them to provide the name of the speaker of the person whose words are being spoken, or to submit their comment via email where their anonymity, anonymity is allowed. Uh, okay, so thank you for your time, and congratulations to David Hayward, an historic addition to the Celine Board of Education. Superintendent Latch has repeated every month for over a year, something to the effect of, I'm paraphrasing terribly, and feel free to correct me in your own comments later, we are not health experts, we will follow the guidance of the health experts, in particular the Washtenaw County Health Department. They have now lifted mask mandates for schools, and this has been done at multiple levels of the government. If you now choose to ignore their expertise and leadership, I would ask that you clearly explain what skills and knowledge you've recently gained that demonstrates your expertise exceeds theirs. If you further decide to enforce masking, I would ask that you stop using county numbers to drive local decisions. Secondly, who on the board now represents me? I can count on one hand the number of times out of the last 100 board meetings where a trustee has expressed, explained, and defended my position on a controversial topic. Right now, the board seems inclined to agree rather than debate. The more difficult questions about a topic, topic, about a given topic are not brought forth, and there is no such thing as vigorous discussion demonstrating that you have a good grasp of all the facts, positions, perspectives, and that your positions have been thoroughly vetted. It feels like an echo chamber. You may in fact have all the facts and have thoroughly vetted your position, however, you do not adequately represent that during your discussion, and therefore, it's not clear to us that you are making an informed discussion. I therefore have a hard ask for you. In addition to your own perspectives, will each of you present and represent perspectives that are not your own during discussions? Will you be what you might consider to be the devil's advocate, and make sure that all perspectives and positions are voiced and examined vigorously? Your vote represents your own decision, and that's yours, at the end of the day, that's it. But prior to your vote, your voice can be used to great effect in making sure that everyone's perspective and position is given due diligence. It's hard to present, explain, and defend positions that you disagree with, but I guarantee you that it will only improve your ability to lead the school and this community. Thank you for your time and effort, and may the wisdom and love that should prevail in these meetings be present tonight.
Hey, Adam. Adam, thank you for your feedback. Uh, what I'm going to do is I'll follow up an email to, um, Vice President McFay, who is our policy chair, and see, he's, I see him making notes, uh, and see if we can have a conversation about the addition of item D that was added on December 14th, and that policy can have a conversation around adding a required name per the form, so thank you for your feedback. Um, Raylin, thank you, and on deck we have Amy Sontag. Uh, Raylin, whenever you're ready.
All right, um, I, I don't have planned remarks like my husband, but I will ditto what he said. Um, along with that, I would like to share our story, um, as you guys well know, we had COVID in January. Uh, my high schooler, who is vaccinated, wore a mask to school, wore a mask to the basketball game, came home and brought it home to the family. Um, I have a variety, I can, a survey of the unvaccinated, vaccinated, boosted, partially vaccinated, we all caught COVID, the masks didn't help, the vaccines didn't help. If you're looking at personal stories here, at this point, there's very little reason why these masks need to be in on our students. The current varieties are not, uh, the vaccine and masks don't do what they were advertised to do last year. And so I am fully aware that at this point, they, they should be gone. We should let the kids breathe, we should let the parents choose, we should let the kids choose, um, do what needs to be done. I, I ask you to prove me wrong. Back here when I stood at the high school stadium in August, yeah, I predicted that you would never take these masks off these kids, um, and, and people didn't believe me, and here we are now, almost into March, and they're still wearing these masks. We will never get down to that 1% out of this transmission that you said we need. Um, we need to look at, at local data, the, our own Celine has said we've had, what, less than 1% of the kids have been catching it? We need to look at local data and, and take these masks off these kids. When you chose to wear masks, I chose to keep my kids home, because I don't want my kids masked. Um, and that's, at this point, the parents who are, don't want to, are too scared because other kids are not masked, when even though their kids are vaccinated and their kids are masked, let them make the same choice. You can send, choose to send your kids to school in the environment that you're told it's going to be at, or you homeschool or switch your kids out. And, and give them the same thing that I had to choose. As far as choosing this, um, you guys also recently said that 280 students have left Celine over the last two years, um, two to three years, since we've had an active group of parents saying, "We don't feel represented, we don't feel you're making choices that we can even feel heard half the time." I can personally name 40 students who still live in the district, um, and, and don't send their kids here. That's almost 15%, I can give actual names, it's not just because we have a lower birth rate. I know more kids who have homeschooled. Um, we need to find a way to have us feel listened to, and to be able to combine this, and not keep just poking the stick with the fire and saying, "Who cares"? I'm sorry, but more people will leave. So I'm saying, do the right thing, don't look at your own biases, but vote and do what the community wants and the community has expressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Raylin. Amy Sontag, parent, oh, hi. And, uh, on deck we have, uh, help me if I'm mispronouncing this name, Lissa Morgan-Thaler-Jones. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Uh, Amy, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, I hope you are all doing well. My name is Amy Sontag, I have three children in the district, and I am grateful for all who touch their lives daily in a positive way. Imagine a day, the sun is shining- Imagine a day, the sun is shining, and you glance at your neighbor of opposing views and think to yourself, "Wow, Bruce, you take such great care of your lawn. I am happy that you are my neighbor." Imagine a day when you are grabbing your groceries from the store, and you see someone wearing a shirt that goes against what you believe, and you smile and say, "Good morning." Imagine a day when we believe in one another instead of fearing one another. Imagine a day when we respect each other for all of our differences. That day needs to be today. The guidance on masking has been so unclear. How can it be trusted? One moment, no one needs to wear a mask; the next, you need to wear two; and now only certain masks work. When will this end? I don't see an end in sight if we continue to follow this path so blindly. Who will be most impacted by this? You, or me, or our children? I definitely believe the latter. Our children, the most precious things on this planet, need to be given a loving, safe, and fearless environment to thrive in, an environment that lifts them up and doesn't hold them back. I believe that masking our children is holding them back. I hold my children in the palm of my hand so gently, and I would do the same for yours. I asked my children how they feel wearing a mask to school. These are their responses. "I don't like wearing a mask, Mommy. I can't breathe." "I feel upset. I'm not sick, Mom. Why do I need to wear a mask?" "I feel sad. I would like to see my friends' and teachers' faces." These responses break my heart. It is time to give choice to each individual and each family. Here's the thing, though. All situations, all of our situations are different. Our situations are what makes this community a beautiful place to live in, a community where our children are our number-one priority, and we would do anything for them. We need to start looking within ourselves and demonstrate respect for one another's differences. It is time to make that change. Our children deserve that. Many measures have been implemented to help individuals feel more comfortable in these past two years. Providing choice in this matter gives an opportunity for all parties to continue to do what works best for their family. Time has not healed us over the last two years. Time has divided us, stripped us from seeing the goodness each and every one of us has within. Time has caused the teachers to stress, the children to fear each other, and our community to lose track of what brings us all together.
Amy, I'm sorry.
It is time to let go of what others think or do and do the right thing. The moment is now. Please give choice back to each and every family. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy. I hate to interrupt. I do want to make sure I'm respectful of giving the three minutes to every individual, so thank you for your comments. So is it Lissa?
Legal name Gay Morgan Thaler.
Okay, thank you very much for.
I am a mother.
Oh, I'm sorry. If I could just announce Jamie McIlvery, I believe it is, on deck. All right, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. I am a mother here from Chelsea. I was asked to attend. I congratulate you for having the students first because little ones should be able to go home to bed after speaking their piece, and I love the fact that little ones were speaking here. It is generally known in the community that most of the school districts have asked the Washington County Health Department for cover so that you all could mandate masks. May I suggest that if you are one of those school districts, we have an abominable school district, you might be better than ours, that you then ask the Washington County Health Department why they didn't tell everyone to wear goggles? Because any virus, and that includes COVID, can enter through the eyes. I have 20 years in biotechnology. I'll give you chapter and verse if you wish. The second issue, of course, is children. They respire faster than we adults do. In their masks, they can build up carbon dioxide levels well north of 5,000 parts per million, which makes you kind of sleepy and dopey. The smallest children will build it up to a level of 25,000 parts per million. You die when it's 40,000 parts per million. May I suggest that you ask your county health department about that? And as a third item, you might ask them why the heck they didn't recommend ivermectin, hydroxychloroquine, quercetin, ECGC, which comes from green tea, all of which are excellent zinc ionophores, all of which will cure you of COVID in the early stages. You will understand, and some of you already know why I was asked to come here and what I'm here about. I suggest you create pods for your immunocompromised so that they may be safe in certain parts of your school. And for those who wish to breathe freely, more oxygen than is supplied by 5,000 parts per million carbon dioxide, set them free. We in Chelsea, as you know, some of you, are emulating our neighbors in Oakland County who have filed a lawsuit against the Washtenaw County Health Department, their own school district, and their superintendent. We are doing the same thing with ours. That lawsuit is likely to be filed this week. If you are good people, and I hope you are, your people here will not wish to join our lawsuit. But if they wish to, they are welcome. I suggest you listen to your citizens.
All right, thank you for your feedback. Jamie, thank you. And on deck, we have, so you're a community stakeholder, Jamie McIlvery, thank you. And Nikki Snyder is next, whenever you're ready, Jamie. Yeah? Is this Nikki? Nikki, okay. I'm going to move her to, thank you. I'm going to move her to the end. Yeah, no, no, it's okay. Yep, Jamie McIlvery, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Close enough.
Okay, all right, whenever you're ready, Jamie.
Okay. I am here as a representative from the founder of Let Them Play Michigan, and we have filed 30 lawsuits in the state of Michigan so far against schools, health departments, for not doing what they are elected to do, which is to take care of the children's welfare and their safety, which they continue to say that that involves wearing masks and protecting from COVID, when that is not what you need to be focused on anymore. You need to be focused on the mental health crisis that is happening in the state of Michigan right now. That is the safety and welfare that you need to be taking care of with these children. The revised school code also says that the parents are to be allowed to be a part of their child's education, and we are not being allowed to do that anymore. So I am here to let you know that we have plaintiffs, we have the money, and we have the lawyer. We will immediately be filing lawsuits against the school district if these masks are not dropped. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, I'll pause for a minute, but we want to get through all of these. Thank you, Jamie, for your feedback. So Danielle Gillespie is next. Is Danielle here? And then on deck, we have Megan Gunnerson. Danielle Gillespie, parent, whenever you are ready.
I'm back again, not wearing my full COVID gear, though. First and foremost, January 14th, 2022, CDC says cloth masks do not prevent COVID transmission. If we are people of science and education here, why are we still wearing cloth masks? And if everyone is so concerned about keeping masks on and preventing viral spread, I sure hope that on the Essar Funding Survey, that air filtration was their number-one pick, which I can guarantee it probably wasn't, and air filtration is the only mitigation strategy currently deployed that actually reduces viral airborne particles. Also, if we require masks, we only encourage fear and anxiety in the students as well as obesity. I know that sounds silly, but can you do full cardiac work with a mask on? Probably not. In gym and outside, probably not. Kids see masks all day, they're probably scared. In the back of their mind, they're thinking of, "Oh, virus, I'm going to get sick, I'm going to get Grandma sick." And guess what? The top two most significant comorbidities with severe COVID disease and death were fear and anxiety and obesity. Anytime in the hospital, over 70% of the patients on a ventilator were obese. Why are we kind of not preventing that in schools? Let the kids exercise freely with their masks off, and let them be able to see their friends. Let families have the choice of what's best for their kids. And to say that there isn't a mental health crisis would just be ignorant. We need to address these issues. The kids are not resilient. I know that's been the top line we've heard. Kids are resilient. They can wear their masks, they're fine. They don't even know what they're doing. Well, we put a 12-year-old in a body bag a couple weeks ago at work, and that was a self-inflicted wound. And kids are not as resilient as we think. Families need to make the choices for their kids, and some need the masks off and some may not, but let them choose.
Thank you, Danielle. Next, we have Megan Gunnerson, parent, and we have James Stewart on deck. Megan, whenever you're ready.
So I actually didn't write anything, there's just a couple notes. I just want to point out that everybody talks about this being our second year. This is our third academic year. It's the third year. It's way too long. I am the crazy mom, because I work in healthcare, when this shit all hit the fan. Washed my groceries in the car, my kids didn't leave the house, they weren't allowed off the porch. It was miserable. And then I took a breath. And it looks like the health department has finally taken a breath, too. And I would encourage you, as you said all along, we're going to follow the science and those people in front of us who know more, because I'm not a virologist or an epidemiologist, and having read the board CVs, neither are any of you. So I would just encourage you to follow what is being laid in front of you as we know more. I have stood before you at a lot of board meetings, specifically about return to learn, which is on the agenda, of course, today, and my concerns remain, and there are many of them. But my main one has been the question all along, how are we doing early intervention to close this learning gap? The superintendent said last year, "We're going to focus on positives or what we're doing well, and we'll get to that." Well, we're not getting to that. In September, we had an 18-month learning gap, over 16 months of time, and from what I can tell online, what's published, we have not narrowed that gap. We use early intervention with children all of the time in various disciplines, and we've missed the early intervention window. And I'm asking you to show what we're actively doing to narrow the gap. Chronologically, we move forward. I need the kids, mine included, to come up and narrow that gap. I thank you for your time, and I would really encourage you to just take a breath and think.
Thank you, Megan. Next, we have James Stewart, and we have Keri Groh. Hi.
I have documentation that I can give you guys.
Okay.
It depends what I'm speaking about. It's the Constitution of the United States of America.
Thank you.
And the Declaration of Independence. And yes, you guys need to. Also, I would recommend, because my time probably hasn't started until I get to the microphone.
That's good.
I feel like the people should be higher than me, and you guys should be on the floor. My name is James Stewart. Okay. My name is James Stewart. On September 7th, our kids walked into Manchester High School and masked a lot of them, regardless of what the media says. Hundreds of millions of people seen our video, not because it was bad, but because it was amazing, because we stood up against tyranny. All of you on this stage right now have sworn an oath. One person particularly today did his oath to the Constitution to uphold it. I am begging you to uphold your constitutional oath, because you will be held accountable. I don't need comments, I'm making statements today. You need to hold your oath dear. You are violating the oath to the Constitution. You are medically masking these children. You might need to reconsider public health and understand that there's something called individual health first. The idea that we are in this together only makes us all victims. People get victimized every day. You have to choose daily to be a victim. And with a virus that has almost 100% survival rate, I don't choose to be a victim, and I never give up freedom for fear. It's time to end this. You will be held accountable. I have a lawsuit going as well in my community, and other people are going to have lawsuits coming against you for constitutional infringement. Did you know that there's jail time with that? If we prove that you violated the Constitution, you will go to prison. Your bonds won't protect you. There's up to $100 million in fines if we can prove that you violated the Constitution and prove damages. We don't need to prove the damages, we only need to prove that you violated the Constitution. Ask yourself right now, are you violating the Constitution? This isn't your job. It's not the board's job, it's not the teacher's job to enforce masks. It's your job to teach curriculum. It's your job to teach math, science, reading, not COVID, not to enforce COVID. I understand that one of the board members wants to punish the students all the way if they don't wear the masks. Well, I'm going to tell you right now, board, you will be held accountable. Your teachers that you're forcing to enforce these masks will be held accountable, because you are not upholding your oath to the Constitution. It is a parent's choice. Parents, if they do not give you the choice back, they don't have the choice to unmask our kids, they don't have the choice to mask our kids. Take your students from this school. We need to leave these schools, these indoctrination camps, and get our kids out of these places. Your time of power is at an end. It's at an end. I'm a father, and I am off of the couch. You have awoken me. I don't fear a virus. I think that you guys need to fear that parents are not going to, we're not going to do this anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Keri Groh, sorry, I was trying to announce that you were next, but you heard me. You are next. And on deck is Lauren Gold, MD, parent. Keri, whenever you're ready.
Thank you for taking the time to hear everybody's comment today before you start making decisions. That's really important. And I've heard a lot of well-thought-out statements, and what I'm asking you to do today is don't dismiss the harm that masks are causing. These children are already suffering higher rates of depression, anxiety, suicide, drug use. As of February 7th, the CDC changed its developmental milestones. So the expectation now is that children at 30 months of age should have 50 words. Before, two weeks ago, that age was set at 24 months. They've caused a six-month delay in speech. That means that those kids aren't eligible for school speech services for another six months. So as a school board, you should be concerned that our youngest learners are at a disadvantage. Now that you have a chance to make masks optional, you can set an example for the rest of the community. It allows parents to talk to their kids in public, and those kids can see the mouth movement form the words and hear the articulation that will develop speech and learning patterns. It impacts their lifelong learning at this young age. So I have asked the board to consider lifting the mask mandates and walking in step with Washtenaw County Health Department. And as the continuing-to-learn plan has been demonstrated, meeting after meeting, Washtenaw County has a vaccination rate of over 75%, and it doesn't include natural immunity. So I think this is a chance for you to come together with what the community needs.
Thank you, Keri. Lauren? And next on deck, we have Clayton Eckert. Lauren, whenever you're ready.
Where's the button on this? It's on. Okay. Oh, it is on. Thank you. I'm just pulling up a letter. I am a parent in the district and also a pediatrician. I am speaking for myself, and I hope it's okay, but I'm reading a letter that was signed by eight fellow pediatricians from here in the community who are also parents. It's actually a pretty interesting group. I don't think that we have all really talked about much of anything, and I really sent out a message asking for people's input to see if there was, as many people have noted here tonight, any differences in opinion, I guess, about whether or not the district should continue the policy that was laid out, which I have said to parents in Ann Arbor, I think our policy here was very reasonable. It had very clear guidelines. It had very clear guidelines, this sort of green light, yellow light, red light situation. It had very clear guidelines as to when we might make changes. And I have always been sort of proud of the response. So this is the letter that we wrote. "We, the undersigned, are a group of Celine parents and pediatricians. We are writing to support continued use of masks in Celine area schools as both parents of Celine students and pediatricians. As general pediatricians, pediatric emergency medicine specialists, and pediatric hospitalists, we've been at the forefront of this pandemic for the past two-plus years. After reviewing the available data and information put forth by the CDC, we agree unanimously that it is too soon to completely lift masking requirements for students. This is also the clear policy outlined by the American Academy of Pediatrics, most recently updated on January 27th, 2022, and linked here for your review. And this has been provided to the board and Dr. Latch. We are very grateful that Celine area schools administrations prioritized in-person learning for the past year. Celine students have been able to safely learn in person this entire school year, due to the policies that the administration put forth to minimize risk to students, teachers, and staff. This has been extremely successful in keeping students safely learning in school. To date, there have been no COVID outbreaks in the middle school and high school. Masks have been shown to mitigate the spread of airborne illnesses, including COVID-19. Recent surveillance data by Dr. Andy Hashakawa suggests that masks in daycare are effective even for children too young to be vaccinated. We fear that prematurely lifting the mask mandate will increase the spread of potential, I'm sorry, increase the spread of COVID-19, unnecessarily endanger students with risk factors for severe COVID, and will potentially increase staff and student absences. Additionally, we are making the classroom less safe for children with special needs who are at increased risk of COVID complications and for whom in-person school is perhaps most important. Current CDC guidelines state that immunized individuals with COVID-19 may return to school and may end their quarantine, I'm sorry, on day six of illness as long as they are improved or improving, if they are able to reliably wear a mask in public."
I'm sorry, if you can just complete your thought. There are three minutes. Thank you.
I'm going to try to be fast. "If the mask mandate is completely lifted, students will have to go back to a 10-day quarantine period, or that there will be no enforcement of mask-wearing for students referring from isolation. The studies that support the limiting of quarantine to a five-day period were based on individuals reliably masking in public. That may keep kids out of school. I'm just going to say very clearly that our policy is not indefinite masking. We're asking you to follow the first policy. Thank you."
Thank you. Thank you, Lauren. And thank you. As a reminder, we are asking that everyone stick to the three minutes so we can hear all of the public comment and get to Dr. Latch's presentation. Clayton Eckert, you are next.
Thank you very much.
And Sarah Fabian, you are on deck also.
So my name is Clay Eckert, and I'm also a Chelsea dad. Well, maybe not also. I think it was a Chelsea mom that spoke earlier. I know her. I'm the first Chelsea dad. I was also asked to be here, so thank you for the invite. I'd like to thank the moms, the moms that brought this to the attention of the dads like James and I that have been on the couch. You know why we've been on the couch? Because we go to work, we come home, and the last thing we want to do is come to a board meeting. Rewind. I bet two years ago, there were two people out here, and I bet they were both women. So thank you. Jemena Loveluck. You might want to think about why she has not sworn her oath at the health department. You might want to ask your attorneys. Indoctrination. I can tell you right now, we're tired of it. The masks, they've got to come off. This is just the start. When my wife got me to go to the first board meeting, I couldn't believe the things that I was hearing. It wasn't even just the masks. The survey, dads, if you're not familiar with the MIPHY survey, look my Facebook, not my Facebook, I don't have Facebook, sorry. Get on your wife's Facebook and look up my meeting at Chelsea. I read some of the questions. Disgusting. The schools receive money for this. All the kids have had it with these masks. You're installing fear into these children. I do not raise my children with fear, nor should anyone. I feel terrible for the kids that are scared. The masks do not work. You know how they don't work? Because the best maskers that I've seen have all caught COVID. Oh, and they're also vaccinated. Don't we all feel a little bit lied to? Two weeks, stop the spread, slow the spread, two weeks. Wear a mask up, two weeks for the mission. That was over two years ago. We're done with it. The vaccinated, unvaccinated, it doesn't matter. You can still catch it, you can still spread it. So your views on vaccinated or unvaccinated do not stop you from catching it and do not stop you from spreading it. It does not. So every time anyone references the little kids cannot be vaccinated, they can still catch it, and they can still spread it. And it's not an approved vaccine. The lawsuits are coming. These are not threats. These are promises. Thank you for your time tonight. I encourage every Celine parent that is excited about other parents showing up to go support my island's meeting. That's tomorrow night. And maybe instead of fighting the board constantly, because life shouldn't be a constant fight, the only thing we want, most of us that work hard every day and work five, six days, we want our kids to be successful in life. Maybe we should all get together and start the best charter school at the boundary of Celine Dexter and Chelsea.
All right. Thank you for your feedback, Clayton. Next, we have Sarah Fabian, parent, and we have Claire or Megan on deck.
Good night, or good evening. I wasn't actually planning on coming here tonight, but I sort of felt compelled to. And I want to say that moms also work all day, and they show up to board meetings. I was really relieved back in August when I came to my first-ever board meeting. My son's a first grader at Harvest. I was very nervous then, very nervous now, speaking publicly. I came prepared with a statement urging you to require masks. And I didn't end up having to make that statement, because throughout the course of the evening, you announced a plan that was really well-thought-out. I was so relieved to know that I had my kid in a district that was making really reasonable decisions. Right before I arrived here tonight, I received an email letting me know that there was a positive case in my son's first-grade classroom. That's not uncommon for us right now. But the dashboard for our district also reports that there were 25 new cases at Pleasant Ridge since Thursday. I don't know if all of you know that. But that suggests to me that there were some outbreaks in classrooms, and I can only imagine what that would have been like if there weren't masks in place. I think what the doctor who was speaking earlier was trying to get to is that I'm not urging you to keep a mask mandate indefinitely, but I do think that the plan that you laid out in August is really sound, and it is really based, it's based on metrics that are measurable. And we're not there yet. We're close, and I think we're getting there, but we're not there yet. So I would just urge you to please maintain your current policy. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. And if I could remind everyone to please afford every speaker, student, or guest, or Celine community member, support and respect. That would be great. Megan, whenever you're ready. And our last one is Nikki, if she did come back. Go ahead, Megan.
Okay, thanks. As said, I'm reading this on behalf of Claire White. Dear Board, it has been two years that our children have been forced to wear masks for eight hours a day. The burden has been placed on them. People are walking around all over this town, this county, this state, and this entire country with the option to wear a mask. I have not witnessed any altercation amongst anybody with differing opinions. This virus has turned into something that is manageable. We are not going to prevent any illness in this world, just like we were never able to prevent the flu, the common cold, bronchitis, or norovirus. Life needs, has to move on. You, as a school board, had consistently said that you were going to follow the guidelines the Washtenaw County Health Department. Well, now those guidelines are, all caps, mask optional for schools. Children and teachers are vaccinated. They are boosted as chosen. Anyone who has not chosen to do so, that is their choice, and same should be for masking. It would be hypocritical of you to go against the guidelines of Washtenaw County Health Department and force our children to continue to wear masks when all you've done this entire time is to follow the guidelines of the health department. Please do not be hypocrites. Also, have you ever thought, if you remove the mask mandate, that you might actually get staff members to stay or to come back and not lose student enrollment? Thank you, Claire White.
All right. Megan, thank you for reading that. And did Nikki come back into the auditorium? No? Okay. I'm going to save Nikki's for the second round of public comment and let her form join that group. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate you having respect for others and letting us get through all of those, and we look forward to a second public opportunity for comment. Response to public comment. We have read each and every email that has been sent to us, and we have also been given a copy of the survey feedback from Dr. Latch. Thank you. So appreciate hearing all of your views. It's clear we have a divided community on this topic, but we appreciate all of the submissions to that. There were quite a few. So thank you for providing that to us. Let's move forward. I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Items may be added or deleted from the meeting agenda, and/or the order of items may be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. Can someone please make a motion?
Motion, Gerbi.
Gerbi, thank you for doing that.
Support, McFay.
McFay, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Hearing non-motion carries 7-0. Julian, we have our student showcase. If you would like to introduce your guests.
All right. So we have Lizzie Clark and Josie Selengrad presenting on behalf of SHS Key Club. Thank you, guys, for coming. Unfortunately, I told you guys you'd be presenting in the first 30 minutes, but that changed a little bit, obviously. So thank you for coming. Looking forward to hearing about Key Club.
If you can just make sure the mic's on. Yeah, there you go. If you guys can't get that mic.
Testing, testing. Okay. All right, good. Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Lizzie Clark, and I am a senior at Celine High School.
And my name is Josie Selengrad, and I'm also a senior at Celine High School. And Josie and I are both co-presidents of Celine Key Club, and today we're going to be discussing a little bit about what our club does for the high school and our surrounding communities. Okay, wait, we're up there. There we go. Okay. So Key Club is just a fun volunteering club. It provides students with enriching volunteer opportunities that promote leadership and build character. We participate in acts of services that directly impact the lives of others within our local, regional, and global communities, which we will further elaborate on our common services that we do around later in the session. So I'm just going to briefly discuss some of our quick club stats. So Key Club has over, around 65 active members, and we're one of the largest clubs at Celine High School. And collectively, our members gathered over 1,035 hours of service. We participated in 118 service events over the last few years, and we have three monthly partnerships. Our first is with PB&J Outreach. Our second is with Focus Hope, and our third is with Celine Area Social Services. And we're going to be discussing those a little bit more in the presentation. We also have three affiliate programs associated with Key Club. The first is Celine Kiwanis, which is the Key Club version for adults. We also have Celine Middle School Builders Club, which is the middle school version. And then we have Circle K, which is the college version. We have three focal areas that we focus on for volunteering. The first is zero hunger. The second is good health and well-being. And the third is quality education, and these are all UN goals. So we wanted to recognize some of our top club service leaders. Spencer Lynn, a junior at Celine High School, has over 100 hours of service. Lizzie and I have over 50, and Ava Schmidt has 48 hours. So we all have our merit award, so. Okay, so our first event is Focus Hope. And to give a brief little synopsis, Focus Hope is a monthly volunteer opportunity that our members normally go to in Detroit. And pretty much, we prepare food boxes for low-income seniors in the Detroit area, and we pretty much make these by adding food, different food items to an assembly line, and there's boxes. Each individual person is assigned a food item to load into boxes that are then delivered to senior citizens. So there we have some pictures of groups that have gone out and volunteered and helped Focus Hope service organization. So another common event we do is food gathers. It's in Ann Arbor, Michigan, and they rescue several tons of food a day that has, that has volunteers process, inspect, and sort. We generally sort through the food that we can give to those in need instead of letting it all go to waste. We will sometimes help with stocking pantries for canned goods, helping wash damaged products, and repackaging bulk items. So just a bunch of, like, saving food and repackaging it to give to those who need it. So those are some pictures of us. So another service organization that we volunteer with probably the most, I would say, of all of ours, is PB&J Outreach. And PB&J Outreach is a nonprofit organization located in Detroit. And pretty much what we do is we get up pretty early. Most of our members get up around, like, 5:30 a.m., and we meet at a church in Plymouth, Michigan. And there, we make PB&J sandwiches, and we sort different, like, clothing donations and toiletry donations and other food items that are donated. And we prepare these, and then we go out and distribute them to different sites located within the Detroit area, and we pass them out to homeless people in that community. And it's a really heartwarming experience, getting to sort of interact with these people and help them out a little bit. So some other events we do, we work with Mott's Children Hospital, Ann Arbor Meals on Wheels, and Huron Valley Humane Society. So with Mott's Hospital, we do a lot of, like, making tie blankets in our morning meetings that will go to the, for the kids at Mott Hospital. For Ann Arbor Meals on Wheels, we do, like, drives for needed items that they deliver to those in need. And we also make a lot of holiday handmade cards for them to be passed out to those that may not be as in good health or those in need. And also, some of it in our early meetings, we make tie, not animal toys, to give to Huron Valley Humane Society for the animals there as well. So we just do a lot, these are our main activities, but we do have, like, other dispersed activities throughout the year as well, so. This upcoming spring, we have a lot of volunteer opportunities for our members. One of our biggest, and most Josie and I are very excited for this event that we'll be participating in, is called the Student Leadership Conference. And last year, we were unable to have this event because of COVID. And Student Leadership Conference is a really large event where all different groups of Key Club from around the state of Michigan meet, and they spend a huge day participating in different service activities. And there are competitions and a lot of fun interacting activities that we're able to do. So we're looking forward to having some people go to SLC this year and represent Key Club. And we're looking forward to a very fun and service-filled spring. Hopefully, COVID doesn't interrupt that. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, and thank you to all of your members. That's very, very impressive. Would any trustees like to ask any questions or make any comments? Yeah, Jenny?
I just wanted to say thank you for coming and sharing your club with us. I know Key Club has a lot of different activities, some that I didn't know about. So I appreciate when students can come to the board meetings and share some of these experiences that maybe we didn't know the full picture of. Thank you for coming, Josie. Special, special, special student there for me, and also recognizing Ava, too. Proud of, proud of. And also recognizing Ava too, proud of, proud of the work that you've done. I just wanted to mention that my, one of my children participated in the PB&amp;J project through Key Club but also through Capstone last year. And it was a remarkable experience and inspired her to continue her civic engagement this year in college. And actually, a special note for students who are participating garnered her a nice scholarship also. So those volunteer hours not only are meaningful for the, for the work that you're doing to better the community, but additionally, it's something that you can look for, for scholarship applications. So congratulations to the two of you, and we are wishing you all the best as you graduate this year.
Yes, Susan?
Thank you for presenting. This is one of my passions. I worked at the University of Michigan in a program called Project Community, and we had student leaders facilitating the class and also students going out to, I think we had over 32 sites for volunteering. So they were able to connect that curriculum to, so the service learning. I don't know if you have a learning component, so that's one question. And also, with volunteering opportunities, is it accessible to all students? I know, of course, the University of Michigan had transportation available, and so that's just a question I have to make sure if you need support or how that works.
Oh, I don't think so. Is the light on?
Yes, the light is on.
We can hear you.
Very clear. Pretty much, Key Club volunteer opportunities are open to anyone at Celine High School. We're not exclusively, oh, like only Key Club members can come and volunteer. We like to, we do a lot of collaborations with other clubs. Just recently, we partnered with Students Against Racism, and we're going to be doing some projects for Women's History Month that's coming up. So all members, all members of the high school are encouraged to come and volunteer with us, so.
Thank you. The learning component.
So I guess like, so each and every other week, we have meetings early in the morning, and we kind of like talk about like service opportunities and like our impacts on like our communities around us. So like that gives us a learning component around it. We also advertise our clubs in many different ways, so like flyers, social media, just to spread the word on what we do and like to give people an idea of like how they can get involved into what we do and helping communities around us. So we do a lot of that, like with social media and stuff. I also feel like a lot of, a lot of the learning comes from the hands-on experience that students get from going to these volunteer opportunities, because if you're doing something virtually, you're not able to get kind of the full experience versus while you're there and you're interacting with different, different individuals. It's really an eye-opening experience for a lot of people, especially people from Celine, so yeah.
Thank you. Awesome.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for these ladies? Thank you very much. We're very proud of your service and leadership and giving back. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our first scheduled report of the evening, Continue to Learn Plan 2021-22 school year, including mask mandate information from the WCHD. Dr. Latch, just so the team and the audience knows, our plan is, this presentation and conversation might take just a little bit, so we're going to plan on taking a recess after the Continue to Learn portion, and then we'll dig back into SRF funding after the break, just so everyone is aware. Dr. Latch, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. And I want to thank everybody for coming. One thing that's clear to me is regardless of your position on masking, that's obviously a big topic tonight, everybody in this community has shown one thing for certain, and that's that you really do care about your kids, our kids. And so as I approach this presentation, I do want everybody to be thinking of that because I, as a superintendent, am proud of that fact, that I know that everybody in the community, regardless of their position, really cares about students, and that's very, very important. Okay. Okay, there we go. So we're going to start by looking at data. We're going to look at both Washtenaw County data, and we're going to look at some of our own Celine Schools data. If you look here, we do see a significant drop in cases across the county and positivity rate and so forth. So that is trending in a positive direction. A dramatic drop as well in daily new cases, as you see a, you know, extreme rise and now an extreme drop. And with that said, as people have pointed out before, we are still in that high phase. So we're certainly not in the moderate phase as of this point, but this data is showing a significant drop. In terms of our own local data, and I want to put this in perspective, that what we are doing is on a daily basis, we are monitoring new cases that come in, both for our students and our staff, and we are also monitoring the number of students and staff that are in isolation. And as mentioned previously, we are still certainly in a pandemic, and we are seeing certain buildings disproportionately impacted as we move through, as we move through the pandemic. Last week, it was Harvest had a disproportionate number of student cases, and this week it is, it is Pleasant Ridge, as mentioned previously. So what this shows us is we certainly are in a pandemic, and we're going to have to manage mitigation strategies potentially differently based on the building. And we will, we will do that. We're fortunate to have a really strong nursing team. Karen Hervey, Wendy Portwood are really outstanding and are doing a tremendous job managing this from a student and family perspective throughout. And we talk daily about our processes and procedures as we move forward. But to put this in perspective, this is a fairly low number of overall student and staff cases as we look at less than 5,000 students in the district and about 650 staff. This is a pretty small percentage of our district that is currently either positive or in isolation. So how have we approached the Continue to Learn Plan? At the very beginning of the school year in August, the Return to Learn Plan, and now as we move forward with the Continue to Learn Plan. Here's what we have been doing. We've been looking at local Celine Area Schools data. We've been considering mitigation strategies. We have been heavily relying on the Washtenaw County Health Department. We look at our nurse guidance, Karen Hervey, who's been Michigan's School Nurse of the Year before with outstanding, outstanding work. We're looking at it with a lens of equity. We are looking at community feedback. Previously, we had sent out a community feedback forum, and we have a lot of comments. And I have a summary slide to share with what those comments reveal. We're also looking at Board of Education feedback, administration and staff feedback, and then ultimately, the development of the plan basing on, based on changing metrics and guidance that have been consistent. It's been consistently that we've been adjusting to changing guidance. So that's been important throughout. So in terms of the community feedback, we received countless number of emails, and we received a lot of feedback from the community feedback forum. And here's some summary points of what was said. Those that preferred masks to be highly recommended but not required said these points. Strongly recommended but don't require, that would be consistent with the latest guidance from the Washtenaw County Health Department. Second bullet point, allow parents and families to choose what's best for their child. Third, to be responsive to the SAS community transmission rates. Next, availability of vaccines should weigh in, which it does. Some said masking is ineffective and harmful. Others said inconsistency of mask-wearing mandates in settings across the county and the area. And then the need to return to a sense of normal, said multiple times. Moving mask requirement will positively influence mental health, early literacy, social interactions, and skills. Now, for those who had comments about preferring that we continue to require masks, following guidance where masks are worn in high transmission, people referred to our initial plan that was color-coded, that did talk about having masks required up to the point that we moved to moderate or low transmission. Another point was keep mask safeguard in place for families who have high-risk situations. We spoke earlier about medically fragile students. The current high transmission rates in surrounding areas that we still are in a high transmission phase, that our youngest population, those under five, can't get vaccinated at this point and need additional protection. The benefits of masking outweigh the cons. We heard a student speak about that tonight. Use the mask mandate until the lowers or number, or the lower, the numbers become lower and after spring break, end of the year, and with those higher vaccination rates. And then concern about increase in absences and impact to in-person learning. We do know that the community has been adamant, and so have we all, about keeping in-person learning throughout the school year. And up to this point, we feel like we've done a good job with that element. So here's what the Washtenaw County Health Department and the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services say about the recent rescinding of the mask mandates. Top three bullets are Washtenaw County Health Department points. Washtenaw County, the orders were issued in September 2021, and prior to this new variant, while they were set to remain in place based on CDC COVID data tracker of substantial or high, conditions have changed enough to warrant rescinding them. So when people say, well, why are they rescinded? Why are they rescinding even though we are in a high phase? Washtenaw County Health Department has talked about how they have conditions changing enough, in their opinion, that it has been rescinded as of February 28th. Second bullet point, that the vaccination rates, as mentioned earlier, are really high in Washtenaw County, upwards of 75%, which is, which is a large number. And that masking is one strategy, but there are multiple strategies for COVID-19 protection. Third bullet point, we're in a different place now that we can offer greater flexibility on the way we can continue to provide guidance. And then referring to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, that the discussion is that based on current conditions, the department is expiring the Public Health Advisory on masking in indoor public settings, including school settings as well. So now you both have the Washtenaw County Health Department and MDHHS backing off on that guidance. So, Celine Area Schools will follow the Washtenaw County Health Department guidance effective February 28th. Masks will be highly recommended for all students, staff, and community members in indoor settings within our schools. Now, I do want to point out there are a number of reasons why we are moving in this direction, but we also want to talk about the equity concerns that do need to be addressed. When you look at our why area, do you have these high vaccination rates that we spoke about? Transmission rates are dropping rapidly. Our local data looks good. Now, with that said, there could be these peaks and valleys. And I will say this, that because we are following the Washtenaw County Health Department guidance, if, for example, after spring break, we come back and there's a massive spike, for example, and they are requiring masks again, we would follow that guidance as well. Now, when we look at other mitigation strategies in place, we do have strong ventilation within our buildings. Rex Cleary, our Buildings and Grounds Director, has done a tremendous job of verifying that that is the case in our buildings. We check that on a regular basis. Still, you know, working through hand hygiene, we're moving into a warmer weather phase, and we really need to double down on the screening. That means that the community has been tremendous with keeping kids home when they're sick. We really need that in place more than ever moving forward. And thus far, we've all been very impressed with that. In fact, so much so that when I'm talking to District Nurse Hervey, she does talk often about, we don't see kids coming into school with colds and, you know, coughs, which used to be very commonplace, and parents have done a tremendous job of being, you know, screening, that self-screening that we need to have happen. And also, we recognize the social-emotional toll, that we do see that masking fatigue and masking enforcement is certainly challenging. And we also see that by the Washtenaw County Health Department coming forward and making this a signal that we are moving in a pandemic to an endemic phase. And then finally, masks would still be required on school buses. Now, the equity concerns that are really important to address, which we are committed to addressing, is that students under five who aren't vaccinated in some of our early childhood special education programs and so forth, that all staff will be required to mask in those programs. Medically fragile students includes kids who can't tolerate a mask or have other health concerns. Now, one of the things that we've been doing for years is individualizing care, because even before the pandemic, we've had plenty of medically fragile students that we have to develop individual plans to keep them safe. We're going to continue to do that and provide options with parents. Again, our Nurse Hervey does a tremendous job of working closely to analyze each situation and talk with parents and families about what their kids need best, and that will be the same thing here moving forward. There's other things we can do for medically fragile students, work through greater spacing, contact tracing in those specific classrooms that medically fragile students are in. That's, we're not contact tracing anymore, but this is a strategy that we can put in play for our medically fragile students. Ongoing communication, better masks for those, you know, students that want, that want them and need them, and so forth. So we are more than prepared to work closely with all our families that need that additional support. Now, here's a very important part that we are very aware needs to happen. I've met multiple times with our administrative team on education around this idea that we are moving into a phase where some people are masking, some staff are going to be masking, some students are going to be masking, and others are not. And we need to make sure that we are educating our kids and our staff and working towards that line of empathy where we can understand that there are going to be different approaches here and that we, we don't want kids bullying each other one way or another about wearing a mask or not wearing a mask, because we are going to be experiencing this moving forward. And I'll just give an example. I was at an event on Saturday, a charity event. There were about 200 people there. We were making meals for people less fortunate, and out of the 200, we had about half wearing masks and half were not. And we were working well together, and we want that same, same thing to continue within the school district moving forward. So this idea that we will work together with this notion that it's okay for people to be masking if they choose and, and if they don't choose to do so. Now, again, we are still highly recommending masks be worn in indoor settings, so we will continue to message that. And again, we'll be prepared to adjust to guidance based on what the Washtenaw County Health Department is directing us. So with that said, that's the end of the presentation. I'm going to come and have a seat, and we can have a further discussion about it.
Thanks, Steve. The podium's a little low. It's different than our usual one. Thank you very much. I mean, clearly, this has been a very challenging couple of years for, for our staff and our families and our students, first and foremost. Appreciate the care and the collaboration that you took in this. I want to thank you, and I want to thank Karen Hervey. I ran into her today and made sure I detailed. I ran into her today and made sure I detailed how much appreciation I have for the very, very difficult job she has had in partnering with you on this, in a landscape of ever-changing guidance, I guess I would say. So, yeah, we'll have a discussion, but for me, you have my full support in this plan, and I look forward to hearing comments and questions from the trustees. Would anyone like to start? Okay, Candace, go right in.
I'll start. I have a question. I'll start with a question. You mentioned getting staff feedback, and I know we've heard a lot from the community today and also via email, not as much from staff, so I'd just love to know from you what that feedback has been like and what the plan is for professional development or supports around those talking points that you mentioned there at the end, in terms of who's masking and who's not, and, and how they get support for how to manage that in the classroom.
Right. That's a good question, Trustee Jones. Yeah, the, the feedback's mixed. You know, there are certainly staff members that would prefer that we continue requiring masks. There's certainly others that prefer that we move forward with, with that choice. There, there's no question about it. In terms of the overall feedback from the thousands of comments, it, it is, I don't know exactly down the middle, but there, there is a divide on, on opinions and, and perspective on this moving forward, that there's no question about it. I think we just consistently, though, have talked about following the Washtenaw County Health Department guidance and therefore want to continue with that approach. Now, as it relates to the education part of this, Laura Washington, our principal at the middle school, coordinated the start of this by meeting with the other administrators and developing an educational component that talks about what students should expect when they come back on February 28th, what staff should expect, actually having conversations with the students about it, and also giving those students who are anxious or nervous about it, the, who the go-to people are that they can get help or, or support initially when, when that transition happens. So we do feel that that's an important part of the plan, and we'll be very aware that we're going to have a mixed reaction amongst our student body and staff as we transition to this path, this transition.
Thank you. David?
Yeah? Sorry, still getting used to this thing. Sure, I just have a couple of questions. I'd like to kind of interject if I can. First, again, I'd like to amplify what Jennifer had to say about thanking you for doing such a great and thoughtful job of, of working with, you know, a really difficult set of conflicting guidance from, from different levels here. You, you and your staff have just done a great, a great job of doing the impossible here. And I'd especially really like to go back and just applaud the plan that you came up with at the beginning of the year. I mean, I was going back a little bit, but at that time, there was even less guidance to work with. And, you know, in, in looking into and doing my own kind of due diligence to look at the current state of the scientific literature, one of the things that I was especially interested in looking at was what's model policy for mask use in K through 12 settings? And something that I found was an article that was just published in January 2022 in the Journal of School Health. And what was proposed there by a team of pediatricians and public health professionals was a policy that they called dynamic masking, but it's really almost identical to what you guys came up with at the beginning of the year, at the beginning of the school year. And they described it as "a metrics-based approach to masking that is flexible and practical, enabling school officials to adapt quickly to the pandemic landscape in their communities independent of political pressures," end quote. So I was really impressed by that, and I think that you and whoever else in your office works to develop that idea deserve a huge round of applause for being ahead of the curve there. I think you probably almost deserve co-author credit on that policy paper. And, and I understand that the landscape has changed, and, you know, we're, we're going in a different direction now, but I, I hope to see that, you know, even as that current decision is being made, that that same spirit of using metrics, those metrics going forward will still kind of remain part of our operational decision-making process. And I'd say that it's worth noting that based on those current trajectories that we were looking at, even as the transmission rate remains high right now, it's likely that, you know, that current plan would, would have resulted in masking becoming optional within the next few weeks, especially if there is, as we're expecting, updated guidance from the CDC on, on transmission metrics, which we're kind of expecting at any moment. But anyway, getting to my questions, and you addressed some of this already, but I'd like to just dig a little bit deeper, we're kind of three-fold. So first, talking about protecting vulnerable students, staff, and families. We've heard before about how Celine has a big population of special needs students compared to other districts in the county, and that that population is really well-integrated with our general ed population, which is great. And we also know that some of those kids are the most vulnerable to, to having negative outcomes from COVID, like kids with Down Syndrome. And lots of other, other kids in that population are the ones who aren't able to wear masks. So I was just hoping to get a little bit more detail from you about the kinds of options that we're going to have to offer those kids and their families who are worried about sending. Yeah, I know you talked about personalized options, but what are those personalized options going to look like to keep those kids safely in, in-person instruction? Because I know that there are a lot of people who are worried about, well, does that personalized mean my kids are going to be doing remote learning? Because that's not an option that they are wanting for their kids. And I know that that's, that's definitely something that, that you don't want to see, so I just think it might assuage people's fears to hear about what, what kind of options people might have.
Right, no, it's, it's a good question, and that's where we do rely on the care of our nursing staff. And so, I'll just give you an example. In previous years, when medically fragile students have been working through, whether it's a flu outbreak in the building or any other thing that happens to be taking over a classroom where, you know, seven or eight kids are getting a cold and, and a bunch are out in the classroom, it's talking to those families about, is it increased spacing? Is it making sure that the teachers are providing additional supports and making sure that they are more aware of who's out and when? When we talk about increasing our contact tracing, again, we're not doing that now, but one of the things that Karen, in particular, is ahead of the curve on, is if one student is absent in a classroom, that may trigger to her, okay, now we need to enact a little different plan with that medically fragile student, because we're trying to make sure that that environment is more controlled. And then it is working directly with, with the parents and trying to determine if, do they need different spacing within that classroom? That wouldn't normally be there, but, but we would, for that student to make sure that we are providing that accommodation. Because I do think it's important that although some parents may want a virtual option or homebound services for a potential period of time, the goal is that all students should be able to come to school and be safe. And, you know, when we, when we went into greater depth with that, that, that was her response, that, that we have always worked directly with families to talk about their specific situation with their specific students, and then develop very individualized plans based on that. And that might mean that the cafeteria environment looks a little different for the students so that they can have increased spacing. So it would be hard for me to give an exact scenario for every student, but what I know we're committed to is working directly with those families and not doing sort of a one-size-fits-all approach for any of the medically fragile students.
That's great. So my second question was kind of in the same vein. The policy that we've been using has been really successful at keeping everybody in the classroom, unlike some of the neighboring districts, both in the county and in neighboring counties, both with more restrictive and less restrictive policies, who have either gone remote or been missing school days. So I was just wondering if you could talk about, a little bit about what other tools, you know, since we're backing off of masking, what other tools does the district have at its disposal if we start to see an uptick in new cases? I know that you said that if WCHD were to bring back a mandate, we would obviously follow that, but, you know, what happens if we start to see movement in cases within the district? Is there any, are there any plans to do other things, you know, to, to use other mitigation strategies that we would step up at that point? Or, or what other, what other, what other tools do we have in our tool, Ken?
Well, I think the, you know, the situation at Harvest and Pleasant Ridge are a good example, that as we move to a phase where we would say that, you know, masks are highly recommended in, in the school buildings, yet if we know that there, you know, is a cluster of cases at a specific building, we are communicating with families so that they are aware, hey, this really is a time to still be masking because transmission rates are higher in a particular building at a specific time. And so it's the communication, it's the greater awareness, and that, of course, you know, we're still saying now that, you know, highly recommended but not required, but I think it's also important to make sure that our parents are aware of the data in the specific buildings. You know, for example, the report that, you know, there are zero cases at the high school right now. Okay, that's good information to know. If there's a significant number at a specific building, we want to make sure that that information is out there too, so that we can suggest and, and say that, hey, this is a time to be wearing a KN95 mask, continued masking, because the transmission rate may be a little high, although low in the district, it's higher in a specific building. So I do think we need to be, react, react to that and be proactive with, well, proactive and it's reaction, but we're being proactive by making sure that families and staff are well-aware and that we're able to work through that together.
And just finally, I know that in the WCHD's announcement, they stated that they would be consulting further with school districts as the 28th approach. Have they done that consultation with our district yet, or? In, in the press release that the, the Health Department made, they said they would be doing more consultation with school districts as the 28th approach. Have, have they reached out to, to you guys yet to do more consultation yet, or is that something we should expect to see?
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit problematic in that the county health department has said that they're providing more guidance on the 28th.
On the 28th, okay, but not yet.
But, you know, we'd prefer to have it before the 28th, but once we get that additional guidance, because we're following the Washtenaw County Health Department regulations, we'll make the adjustments, whatever those are.
Great. Thank you very much. And again, I, I, I realize that this is, you, you've been put in an impossible situation with, with, what, what you're being asked to do, and you've done a great job and, and a very thoughtful and thorough job of looking at all the evidence. So thank you very much.
Thanks, David. Great first meeting, huh, to just enjoy this. Thank you. Anyone else? And Julian, I don't want to put you on the spot, although sometimes I do, but we're always welcoming of any feedback or comments that you have as well.
I've quite a few things written down for my board update, so I'll just include it then.
So I just also wanted to just reiterate what trustees have already said before, and also what some of the public commenters said. It's an impossible situation that we've been put in, especially you, Dr. Latch. And so I want to just reiterate that, that we aren't health experts, not, not a single one of us. We, we sought these positions and were elected to these positions to, to focus on academics. And so with the governor's office and, and the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and now the Health Department, you know, kind of tossing this down to, to school districts, it's, it's really not the, it's really not fair. So, so I applaud the work that you have done to research and, and to find a plan. I will, I will say, for the record, that I am, I am by nature risk averse. I, I think a, a part of that is that in, in our family, I am often the only parent home, and so I don't take a lot of risks, because if Mama goes down, the whole ship goes down. So I think as I've gotten older, that has become more the case. And I understand that, that there are a lot of people in our community who, who also feel that way. So for that reason, the plan in the fall felt safe to me. The plan in the fall felt like there were metrics and that I could wrap my head around that. But like with anything that has occurred over the last, as Megan stated, three school years, we get comfortable with one thing, and then things change, and, and we have to get comfortable with another thing. And I saw this happen when teachers and students started to return to buildings. I was in the first wave in my building to return, and I was nervous, and, and then once we got in there, it, it felt okay, but every wave that came after, I saw that fear in my colleagues. And, and as someone who had that feeling before, I did my best to assure them and to support them and to do what I could do to make them feel comfortable. So if my office window needed to be open, or, you know, whatever I needed to do to help them be comfortable, that's what I did as they were coming back too. And so I am pleased with the education that, that is, the talking points and the education that is going to be happening for teachers and for students so that we can support one another, because there is no policy, there is no mandate that we could set that would, that would, that would ensure kindness and would ensure safety for everything. We can't make a mandate to force other people to care about other people. So by educating, as Amy said, respecting one another, we can, we can hopefully move forward. I will, I will say my one concern is that separate is never equal. And so I am concerned for students who before had to make the choice to stay home for their family's beliefs, and I am concerned about families now who are going to be having to make difficult decisions because of their beliefs. So I, that is one thing that I am concerned about. I'm wondering if we can support some of these families. I know one of the students who spoke tonight was talking about how spacing is difficult. So is that, one of my questions is, is that a part of the education? Can we please, can we help support students who might feel more comfortable with more spacing, at least in the interim? I think the only other thing that I would say is that we've heard from people on both sides, and we've heard from people who are concerned because their children are immunocompromised. And, and my heart really has, has been torn, because we've also heard from parents who, who have expressed concerns and have shared stories of, of some significant mental health issues that have occurred because of the pandemic. And so when we're thinking about, you know, what is the best choice, and I, I've always, I ran, when I was campaigning, I thought about, I said that I would always think with whoever is the most vulnerable in mind. And it's almost impossible for us to even see, is it, is it a student who is immunocompromised? Is it a student who is suffering from mental health? It's imposs, it, it really is a difficult balance. So I, I, my last question, in addition to spacing, is because Karen is going to be working to individualize plans with teachers, with families, with students, is it possible for us to consider using some of the ESAR funds to support, to support Karen and her, and additional nurses to individualize those plans so that students in vulnerable situations can feel, and their families can feel safer? So in summary, I guess I'd like to know more about potential spacing mitigation and ESAR funds to support individual... ESER funds to support individualized plans for our immunocompromised students.
Okay, well, I'll start backwards. So yes, we certainly can use more funding for additional nursing support or anything that Karen and our team may need. And we've been trying to do that throughout the pandemic, whether it's, hey, we need to bring an additional person in temporarily to do contact tracing, for example. So we would continue to do that if Karen and her team felt that there was a greater need. Now, a lot of what they've had to do dropped off when the contact tracing and all the phone calls regarding that went away. Now, again, February 28th comes along, we're going to get additional guidance from the Washtenaw County Health Department. If those things change and we need additional support for Karen and her team, we can certainly provide that. As it relates to spacing, yeah, I mean, I guess take a student that is in a classroom that's immunocompromised. I think this is where there is that empathy element of you're talking to the peers in the classroom to talk through that situation and provide additional supports. I do think that students certainly understand that at any age and will help support the health and safety of any individual student within the classroom, along with the teacher. So if that means that there does need to be some greater spacing, I'm certain that the individual team can work that out. And again, unless there's a specific scenario given to our nursing team, I don't want to speak on exactly how they would play that out, but I know they're committed to make that work so that students can participate in in-person learning.
I think I really was just hoping that maybe we could, for the young child who spoke tonight and was worried about spacing and group work and partner work, can we just make a statement to her that we're going to do everything that we can to support her and her safety through individualized plans with her family and nurses and parents, whoever is involved?
Yes, yep, we will do that for a student who spoke tonight, which I do. Well, we have a couple of students that spoke tonight, Lorraine and Mariel, that we would be providing individual support for really any family or student that needs an individualized plan as it relates to safety protocols related to COVID or really anything within the school district, I think is important. And that's something that Karen stressed with me, that we've been developing these individual plans for as long as she's been a district nurse, in all years that she's been doing this, she's been in this role. And we will continue to do so, even though we may have to use some different mitigation strategies that we haven't used before, for example, here.
Well, thank you for this plan, and thank you for listening to all voices and trying to make the best way forward for our community.
Sure.
I think Brad, Michael had motioned, and then we'll go down there if that's okay? Michael, you want to go ahead?
I would prefer to Brad.
Okay.
Well, here we go.
All right, go ahead, Brad.
Well, Dr. Latch doesn't need to hear me say this, but I support this plan. So I, you know, as I find myself thinking about things over the last year, I think about four tenants that I've used pretty regularly when analyzing policy, thinking about decisions. So for me, those four things are, number one, I want to provide strong educational outcomes and environments for students. Number two, I want to be legally compliant. Number three, I want to be making good and exercising good financial judgment. And the fourth one is I value expertise. So those are kind of like the four things that are important to me. So when I think about each of those four things, and I have some questions intermixed in here, here's how I got to feel comfortable with supporting this plan. So number one, we do have vulnerable students, and I agree that we need to maintain an equitable focus on them. But I believe as a teacher myself, that school staff and leaders have been personalizing the education for students for years, through IEPs, 504s, parent-teacher conferences, partnerships. And so I guess I would say that our staff is top-notch at providing equity and good solutions for our students. And so I trust that, I trust that they'll continue to go to the extraordinary lengths that they have always gone to for our students. So I'm satisfied on the first tenant, if you will. I know our administration unions and our people are going to have, have good relationships, and they're going to continue safety conversations, and I think those things are important. So now, when I think about number two, it's, you know, I think about being legally compliant, and we have been legally compliant with the lawful mask mandate all along. And so I believe that with the changing guidance, I'll get to that in expertise. So financial judgment, so we have ESER funds and general budget dollars to operationalize the plan that I think Dr. Latch has put forth here tonight. And I hear in his presentation that he's dedicated to supporting our students, and he's going to use funds. And I'm hearing about personalizing for students, and so I find that satisfactory to me. I think our community has put us in a tremendous position with safe, warm, and dry bond funds to be able to have facilities that can support the educational environment of our students to do this work, to do it equitably and do it well. So I wrote this down, and it's funny, Jenny, you would have just asked this because you usurped me. As I said, I was going to ask you, I hope or recommend that we could continue to have conversations about how we might utilize those ESER funds dedicated in a dedicated manner to support those students and families who need that personalization and individualization. And you've satisfied me, and I believe I will do that. And then the last thing for me is expertise, right? I consider our educators to be the expertise in our classrooms. I consider, so as such, we follow the experts at the Washtenaw County Health Department and the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. We've followed them along as they've had this mandatory mask mandate for schools. This is, and so for me, this is what they do. And I will tell you that personally, just, you know, like, this is fast for me a little bit. Like personally, for me, this is quicker than I would have preferred. However, I'm not one of them. I'm not an expert who looks at the amount of data and looks at the things that they look at. And so because of that, I'm inclined to believe in the experts who are saying, we can do this. And so that also makes me support this plan. Now, Dr. Latch, this is a question I have about that. So you have engaged in regular conversations, I believe, on Fridays or Friday mornings with the Washtenaw County Health Department. At minimum, you've been in regular correspondence. Do you anticipate that those conversations will continue at regular intervals and that we will involve our stakeholders in our different parts of our schools so that we can, so we can do this?
Yes, for sure. We've been meeting on a regular basis with the Washtenaw County superintendents and the Health Department, sometimes, you know, every other week. And when new guidance comes out on February 28th, because what Trustee Hayward was saying is that, yeah, they're rescinding the mask mandate, but they are also coming out with additional guidance around that on the 28th. So we're going to need to engage right away with the Washtenaw County Health Department on how do we enforce or implement whatever it is that is new to the guidance, if there is anything new. We're not sure about that either. So yeah, we are in regular contact, and I will say this, the Washtenaw County Health Department has been very responsive with individual queries that I have made about various things related to quarantining last year, for example. I had a lot of questions about that. I would ask individual questions and get responses quickly. So yeah, we're engaged in a regular basis with the County Health Department.
All right, well, thank you. And I guess the last statement I would make then is, as long as we're doing that and we're being continuously mindful of our data, our safety, our personalized situations for our families, then that's why this has my support.
I'm so glad you went before me, Brad. I could check off some of the boxes on my list. Anyway, I just wanted to say, I was listening for a few things. I don't have a question, so you can kind of relax a wee bit. I had been listening through the plan for a couple of things. One of them was a clear recognition that we're in a period of transition, that as we get to the point where the virus is, where the pandemic is more manageable, finally. And it's not going to happen with the flip of a calendar, or the flip of a switch, or a flip of a finger. It's going to take some time. There's slide three, which you don't have to call it up, but I obsess over that graph every year. Every day, I look and see the numbers. I look at worldometer and compare country rates and states. It's an unhealthy obsession I've had, but I'm delighted to see that the numbers are finally heading in the right direction. I wanted to say also, several community members tonight addressed, offered some very good points. Sadly, a lot of them have headed out, but I wanted to note that some of the suggestions were focused on our most fragile kids in the schools, immunocompromised, special populations, special needs populations, students, those who are medically fragile. And I also was delighted to hear, time after time, talk about ventilation, filtration, hygiene, spacing, all of these issues. I know you're addressing them in the schools, so let me wrap up by saying, I absolutely trust the teachers in the classrooms are going to treat the students, the way I heard a couple of times up here, with respect for their wishes. One of my favorite comments in the 3,500 was the mother who said, "My kid will throat punch anybody who tries to take the mask off her." It's a classic. I trust those teachers, and I also, Dr. Latch, I trust the administrators that you've been training and supporting. They've been extraordinarily cautious and supportive of all the kids in the schools that they have. And I also greatly appreciate the metrics-based approach, and thank you for referencing that, Dr. Hayward, I appreciate it, the Journal of School Health. So we're on the right path, I think, so far, and I know that we'll pivot and adjust and tweak as we go forward to address the needs of those most vulnerable students that we have. So thank you, sir.
Any other comments, Susan? So I guess a couple of questions and comments. So I don't know if I should just do that all together and you'll kind of, want questions first, or? So I'll just go. So back in August, we made the decision, and families either agreed with the decision or we possibly lost families who did not want their children masked. And we also had families who decided to allow their children to come because they felt safe and allowed their children to be in person, which is one of the things that we've pushed for, I think everybody in the community pushed for, with having our children in person. Just looking at Pleasant Ridge today with the high twenties and thirties, that many people, children, aren't in person. And I know we had a commenter who said, "What if we don't have masks? That will be larger." Another, so in August, we also used, this was before the Washtenaw County Health Department even came out with a mandate, we also used, in addition to Washtenaw County and the Michigan Health Department, guidance by CDC, a lot of it was CDC, and the American Academy of Pediatrics. I'm interested in what they are saying now. Another question is, I think there hasn't been a lot of research done about the emotional impact of this optional masking. So with a mask, children who are choosing to wear a mask, or their parents are choosing for them not to wear a mask, how would that impact, have an emotional impact on them? For one, children who have lost family members to COVID, who have anxiety with others having the mask off, for example, our immunocompromised children, we're taking half of their safety away, really. So you need, there's that transmission between both of them. So when you have one not masking, or however many kids not masking, we're still compromising them. And then I'm concerned about singling out. I know we got some emails about this as well, parents who have children with conditions, that we are singling them out for their medical needs. So whenever we accommodate, and possibly, you know, those are the only two who are masked or whatever, is there ADA issues and HIPAA issues with that, with the perception? Also, I agree with a lot of the commenters who said cloth masks are providing the best protection, and that's absolutely why we need to be masking and using better masks. And so I'm wondering if we are providing that for our students? So masks that are KN95 and KN95 for our students, just in general, I'm worried that parents will not allow their children to wear masks, and maybe those children do want to wear masks. I want to make sure that it's accessible to everyone, even not requiring them to ask for it, it to be in an area where they can grab it if they want. I did read a lot of the student feedback, and, you know, it was like that 50/50 split, right? And all this data, like, it's hard, you can't capture everybody. But some of their comments were worrying about the in-person, not having in-person classes if there is, you know, a breakout, and so that was a concern. Let me think. There's a concern over, concerns about emerging variants, long haul, I mean, death. The pandemic is not over. People are still dying. In fact, my children's grandpa died in January. I mentioned this last time, not vaccinated, never masked, and so it is not over. I'm trying to think whatever. So I do not support this plan, and I do not, if we have children who end up with conditions or currently have conditions, or, you know, who die, I will not be responsible and hold that under me. So I do not support this at all. I think we should be waiting till the Washtenaw County Health Department brings it out in February 28th. I think, you know, students brought up after spring break, why aren't we waiting till after then? And also, why are we not just going to carry out the next few months as is? So yeah, that's kind of, yeah, I got everything in? Probably not, but...
Okay, I tried to write down to the best I could some of those questions. I'll start with the Pleasant Ridge situation. So I think it's an example of, we are going to have some waves of COVID in specific buildings. We've had this before with flu, where there have been certain buildings impacted. In this situation with Pleasant Ridge, so I met with the staff today, we talked it through as it's clustered in a few different classrooms, and we spoke about the possibility of, you know, as we monitor the next few days of school, if we felt that, you know, there were additional cases popping up, that we would be making sure to let, you know, the Pleasant Ridge community know that, hey, as we come back on February 28th, yep, we are rescinding the mask mandate, but here's the situation at Pleasant Ridge. We strongly do recommend masking for the next week, that we'll have, you mentioned KN95 masks, we have those on order for students, we have plenty for staff, and that would be an example of us trying to react to the situation at a specific building and then make sure that everybody is educated. make sure that everybody is educated. Because, you know, yeah, we look at low transmission rates throughout the vast majority of the district, but there could be some of those popping up in certain areas. In Harvest, it was a week before, that kind of moved through pretty quickly, and now has dissipated, but we will be monitoring that closely. As it relates to the CDC and American Academy of Pediatrics and what they're saying, I mean, we do know that their guidance is highly recommend masks indoor setting, but I still will go back to the Washtenaw County Health Department. When they released their new guidance, it didn't say, "We would like schools to require masking." It did say, "We highly recommend masks." And I think that that nuance is important, that they specifically, that we are following that guidance, as we have been throughout the pandemic, and feel like that we need to be consistent with that. And we talk about students, you had asked about students that would have anxiety, that's what I was mentioning on the education slide that's still up there, that we will make sure that in every building, our students and our staff for that matter, have support for coming back into a transition phase, like Trustee McVeigh said, in that students are going to react differently to it, so is the staff, and that we want to make sure that they do have people to go talk to about this, to get greater support as it relates to that. You had asked about singling out kids with medical conditions. That is of valid concern, and it's of valid concern every year, because we have often had students who have, whether it's, let's just say, a heart condition, or something related to breathing, and that we often are needing to talk to classmates about the condition, and that, yep, we do the best we can, our nurses, our teachers, to make sure that we're not singling out, per se, but it is bringing awareness to the other students and often, parents in the classroom, that we do have potentially a medically fragile student. So, although we are trying to make sure we're assimilating and being cognizant of that, there certainly is this element of making sure that people do know, so that they can make proper adjustments, to demonstrate that empathy and care that we know is important. You had, yeah, so KN95 masks on order for students, we expect them here very soon, and that there have been people that are worried about not having in-person class, or whether that's in-person activities at the end of the year. Those are important concerns. I do know that the community does want in-person school, and that, again, that's where, you know, if guidance does change from the county health department based on, wow, all of a sudden, there is, and I say after spring break, because last year, we did have a spike after spring break. Now, we were still in, we were coming back in person, and we, but we did have more students out during that spike. Will that happen this year? We don't know. We have a much higher vaccination rate, it'll be warmer weather, but the trend pattern has been that when we have a longer period off, that there are greater cases when we come back. So, we will have to monitor that closely. And then, I think the final question, fresh me again, something related to, why aren't we waiting for the Washtenaw County Health Department to, what, provide additional guidance? Well, we're just, we are being responsive to their current guidance, and their current guidance is effective February 28th, that the mask mandate is rescinded. And what we are confident of is that regardless of whatever new protocols, procedures, quarantining, isolation, that they are communicating to us on February 28th, we will be able to follow it. So, we're feeling like there isn't the need to wait. We would need to wait if we felt like there was no way we were going to follow whatever guidance they put forth, but we feel confident that we can.
And it triggered some other questions, but thank you for your responses. A question about if we have to go back into masking required. I don't know if there's concerns with that, about allowing the students to, you know, for it to be optional, and then how that's going to look if, you know, unless in a month we're going back to required masking. I just have concerns over that as well.
Well, I mean, I think we've had concerns about the changing guidance all throughout the pandemic. I mean, somebody alluded to earlier, you know, at one point, it was that, you know, everybody needed to wear at least a cloth mask, and then it was double masking, and then it's KN95 mask. And I do think the reality is, we'll be able to respond to whatever does develop next. Now, you're right, it's probably more difficult to, you know, have the option of not wearing masks and then have to go and, you know, require that again, but based on what we've seen with the community, because we are messaging the consistency of following Washtenaw County Health Department, it wouldn't be inconsistent for us to go back and say, "The county health department is now requiring masks," and we would follow suit.
Thank you. That's, I think that's good for everybody to understand, that that possibly may happen.
Thanks for, yeah, Julian, go right ahead.
So, this was going to be part of my update, but Fitzmore, now, I've heard a lot of you guys talking about just how it looks in school. So, so far, I think I can confidently say that, in general, we follow the rules of, like, wearing masks in class, so it hasn't been a problem so far from a rules standpoint, so with or without the mask. I think, you know, again, students are respectful and have respect for rules, which is unlike what we see in some community areas. And again, students respect the rules and guidelines of school administrators, so whatever rules are put in place, again, with or without the masks. And this is mostly in the high school I'm referring to, because that's where I am five days a week. But, so I think, in general, there will be, you know, respect for rules and what administrators and what the board is putting in place today. And then with East Up, with providing masks in school, in the high school, right now, obviously, they're required, but they're still available, there are boxes located pretty much everywhere in each classroom, it's always right by the door, and then in the cafeteria, there are numerous boxes scattered all throughout, as well as in the library, which I would hope would stay, and I'd anticipate that those masks would just stay there for people to grab. So, there are an abundance of masks throughout the school that students can grab, and I've found myself going to those boxes all the time when they rip or whatever. And then, again, I can't speak for every one and every situation, but in general, and from my four years in the high school, with like the exclusion and bullying part, despite how polarized everything seems lately, you know, evident by numerous school board meetings, it is not that harsh in the high school, and that's kind of where we're also having those discussions. I'd be surprised if first graders were talking about all this stuff. But in the high school, in general, like the conversations we have in class, at lunch, in the hallways that I often hear, because most of the time I'm included in those, it's respectful, they're calm, it's more of kind of understanding what everybody wants, and it all seems to work out in the end. And again, I can't speak for every situation, I know some things, you know, escalator, whatever, but in general, students, I believe, instantly are respectful, and that's what I've seen and experienced. So, that's when it comes to controversial matters. So, ultimately, mask on or mask off, I mean, we're always resilient, the students always seem to overcome whatever is thrown their way, and we've made it this far in school. So, again, mask on or mask off, I think we'll be able to, you know, continue to thrive for the rest of the school year and into the future.
I continue to be so proud of our students. I'm really glad that you chimed in there, because I worry, I mean, I was reading the survey feedback yesterday, and I saw a lot of anger and fear, frustration, fatigue, and a lot of division. So, I think we have a ways to go as a community overall, on kind of building bridges and things like that. I'm really glad to hear that the students are getting along and modeling that great behavior and working together. I'd like to see that continue. A lot of that feedback talked about fear of bullying for children who may not mask or may mask, both sides. So, definitely don't want to see any student or staff member have anything negative come out of this plan. I really think we should continue to stay flexible, the Pleasant Ridge conversation, or Harvest, or whatever, whatever school, I really like, working to empower decision-making for unique situations in individual buildings or classrooms. And so, I would thank the staff and the families in advance if we need to be a little bit flexible in some of those situations. But the largest thing I saw coming out of that feedback was, everyone has a love of children, and I think they appreciate the staff. So, let's keep that at our heart and move forward, and thank you very much for the presentation. So, I know you'll, you'll, do you want to talk about next steps, like what are you doing with the community, or FAQs, or will there be an email tomorrow?
Sure, we will send out an email tonight through School Messenger stating the plan moving forward, and provide that to media outlets, too, and then the building administration knows to implement the educational plan tomorrow and/or into Thursday, because we do want to get in front of that before February 28th.
Okay, thanks, Dave. I think we're being cued that we should entertain a motion to recess, please. Can someone please make that motion? Miller, so moved. Miller, thank you.
Gerbi, second.
Gerbi, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing non, motion carries, 7-0. We will take a brief recess. Do we want to say 10, 15 minutes? 10 minutes? All right, so we'll see you at 9:15. If you guys can all toggle your mics to off, and we'll be back in 10. If you guys can all toggle your mics to off, and we'll be back in 10. Okay, we're going to return from recess at 9:17 and move forward with our second scheduled report. ESSER Funding Presentation and Budget Amendments, Assistant Superintendent Houseley.
Okay, we have our ESSER III funding kind of review passed our last meeting that we had a public forum and did some surveying data, so if we can go to the next slide. So ESSER, you might have heard that in the news and other times that we've used that acronym, and this is what it stands for, Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. This is federal money that is allocated to public schools to provide support through COVID. One of the things that might not realize is that it does start at the federal level, then goes through the state level, then finally gets guidance to schools, and then specifically what and how to do to get the funding. So even though it is federal money, we see that a lot of the timing plays out very differently throughout time. So this is just a recap of where we stand for ESSER. ESSER I funding was about $76,000, and really, we finalized that back in June of 2020. At that point in time, we didn't really know what the next piece would bring, and there were talks about cuts to school funding, and we utilized that money as quick as possible and drew that down, and that was finalized back in, like I said, in June of 2020. ESSER II funding is about the $369,000. ESSER III is $830,000. And the reality of where we are today in ESSER II funding, some of it was released in last fiscal year, but as it flowed to the state, that got tied to some other things, and only partial of that funding got released to schools, and they tieballed other pieces to parts that Whitmer had vetoed. So it kind of went through that state level and then got caught up for a little moment as well. And then really, in November, they started coming out with a lot more things about ESSER III, and then found December due dates and some February due dates that we found out as just all unfolded. So if you got a next slide. So one of the things with all of the ESSER funding, we really can go back all the way to March of 2020 when COVID started, and all the way up to next fiscal year, '22, '23. And with that, we still have to have plans that are approved through a portal, a grant portal that we use with MDE. And so even though they're past expenditures, we need to get those approved and then be able to allocate those expenses then to those approved grant programs before then asking for those funds. Go ahead in the next slide. So part of the stipulations in ESSER III was a 20% requirement that they stated needed to go for learning loss for the pandemic. And that definition up there was slated as, "The school district must reserve at least 20% of the funds to address learning loss in the implementation of evidence-based interventions and ensure they respond to students' social, emotional, and academic needs to address the disproportionate impact on underrepresented student groups." And so that's straight from the Michigan Department of Education, their definition. And so with our ESSER III funding allocation, that 20% represents that $166,000 number you see on the screen. Go to the next slide. Yep.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much, Miranda, appreciate that. So Miranda provided an overview. I'm going to talk a little bit about allowable uses and district vision. So one of the things we've been looking for is, you know, what are the allowable uses for these funds? And on the right side column, it talks about how we are looking at those allowable uses to better support our strategic goals. So we're connecting with strategic goal at the top, ideas related to academic, professional, life skills for current and future success, that's, you know, goal, our goal number one, and then allowable ways in which we're planning to do that or have already started to do that. And then the second one, related to strengthening family, community, and school relationships, and some ways that we are already doing that or looking to do that in the near future. Third goal, ideas related to social, emotional wellness and mental health, and then some connections that we are going to be, are doing now and/or are looking to do in the near future. And then finally, finances and how we're trying to address that with these allowable uses of the ESSER funds. Next slide, please. So really, we've met multiple times. One during a finance committee meeting, where we had an ESSER-specific finance committee meeting and looked at possible uses of these funds. And then another was a community forum that we had recently. We did that through Zoom because it was on an inclement weather day, but it was very productive, and we had a fair number of participants give us really good ideas. In addition, we did have a survey where we asked the community to more or less rank out of the 12 allowable uses that we put forth in front of the community, and these were the three top responses overall. Number one, continue to employ existing staff and or hire new in order to maintain quality of services. That was number one. Number two was providing mental health services and support for our students. And three was addressing learning loss amongst our students. So now, next, we're going to get into the details of that, so we can go to the next slide. And I'd like to introduce Cara Davis. She's our Teaching and Learning Team Lead, and she's going to talk about how this all will come together.
Thanks. So after we looked at prioritizing both from the community perspective, our district admin perspective, or even our student perspective weighed in, it was really interesting within those three priorities and then the other categories as well, to see a lot of crossover between some of the things that we had previously had in action and had implemented programs, structures, routines, that came up in some of the suggestions or themes of the feedback that we've been getting. And so something that I was really thinking about was, oh, so even though we are talking, of course, about ESSER funds tonight, one of the things I think our stakeholders are really looking for is how are we supporting students? And so you'll see some ideas here that are ones that we have in action that are not all supported by ESSER funds necessarily, but might be funded differently through the school. And then I've also highlighted some that we have earmarked with ESSER funds, too. But I really wanted everybody to be able to see the connections. So previously, at a board meeting, I had mentioned that we were really well-positioned as a district to support our students before the pandemic and then throughout this pandemic. And as I was wrapping my head around how to best share some of the systems that we already have in place, I'm going to credit Caroline Stout, our District MTSS Coordinator, for this diagram. We actually built this in 2019 as a way to show how we've humanized the school system in addition to our strong academic programming. And inside of it, you see a lot of the things that we already have in place in Celine area schools to support students in both their social, emotional wellness, inside of their behavioral, internal and external behaviors, and then connecting and empowering them. And so this is a very complicated, interactive drawing that you can actually click on in the slide deck itself. It takes you some descriptors of those things, but these are pieces that we had in place already, that we are either leaning into, investing more time and energy into, or even leveling up to meet students' needs. It's important to hold on to this because some of the stakeholder suggestions, we're actually calling up some of the pieces that we already had in place. So what we've outlined is looking at those three priorities. It's not to say that we aren't addressing the other priorities as well, it's just we thought that highlighting these top three, some of the survey suggestions and the ideas that were either moved into action or are moving into action, as well as where some of the ESSER funds are tagged, would be really helpful. So just to give you a quick understanding of how this diagram works, so the priority is up in the upper left-hand corner. The response trends are from the 500 participant responses. That was a combination of staff, students, and community stakeholders. And those were some of the suggestions they made, and those I wrapped in a general category. And most of them were fairly general versus specific suggestions of how to get to those pieces. And then in the yellow is moves that the district is making in order to be responsive to those trends or had already moved in that direction based on previous feedback. And then the highlighted green ovals are the ones that we've assigned ESSER funds to. Does that make sense? Okay. All right, so in this first priority area, continuing to employ existing staff and or hire new to maintain quality of services. Some of the survey suggestions really centered on compensation, being competitive, having high compensation rates, being fair. Retention and hiring felt really important. Staff mental health being a huge component of us keeping our staff in the schools, given the trend that we've seen in staff leaving various public education environments, and then hiring specialty positions to take the burden off of the existing staff there. So those were some of the trends that came up in the feedback that we received. Some of the things that we've put into place, Assistant Superintendent Ellis worked this fall with the SEA, as you know, to really look at our wages for our staff throughout our district and making those more competitive and having a great compensation package for them. We increased our hourly cover compensation for teachers who were doing double duty and covering their open positions. Staff mental health supports. Our district administration and building teams have been working really hard to provide supports for teachers, whether it is in the luncheons that we hold or providing an hour of coverage to have an additional planning time or an admin covers, or to do some fun get-togethers, Wellness Wednesdays. There's all sorts of examples how teams have come together to support staff in their mental wellness. The ESSER funds in this particular category that we have tagged, and we are funding a portion of the literacy tutors that we, so hiring new and funding that. The additional nursing services that Steve mentioned earlier, and we are putting in an additional counselor at Heritage at the 405 Building of contracted services, continuing to maintain the quality of the virtual learning for our students who are currently virtual, maintaining some of our digital tools. The one within the ESSER funds is Zoom because we are still utilizing Zoom to be really flexible in order to give staff access to that for their own use and also for us to be able to run meetings in a much more flexible way. And then also, we have hired three student SEL coaches, or behaviorists. We've settled on SEL coaches as the title for those. So instructional staff or coaching staff that will work specifically on social, emotional wellness directly with our students. The second priority is providing mental health services and support. And here you'll see some repeat ideas. There was a lot of overlap between the suggestions and categories. So in this one, the new ideas are targeted SEL lessons, so social, emotional learning lessons, as well as mentor and advisory time. From the ideas moved into action, you can see the three that there's some crossover. So the counselor there, the student SEL coaches, and the staff health supports are crossing over into this one as well as impacting the first priority. In addition, this year, we have, as you know, culturally responsive consultant who's really working with our professional development model to reach our teachers and teach them to strategies to help all of us better meet our individual student needs, create a culture of belonging, acceptance, safety inside of our classrooms. A number of PD has been, a number of opportunities for professional development has also been around social thinking. We started the year with trauma-informed strategies. We're coming back to listening sessions for our community, those academic coaches again. Sorry, that's a new idea on this one. The academic coaches, we are working with Engage Michigan and Graduation Alliance as a possibility to install academic coaches for students in need, specifically at the secondary level, and then as needed on other grade levels as well, and then also additional advisory time. So for example, Hornet Time in the fall, we're going to increase the amount of time as a transitional space. So thinking about rescheduling and working with our schedule in such a way that when the students come back in that transition time, that they'll be increased Hornet Time for them to get to know their mentors a little bit better. We're also looking at a Celine middle school advisory time as well. And then addressing learning loss among students is the third area, the third priority. So you can see that retention and hiring comes back in this one, so keeping our excellent staff that we have. And then other trends in this response category, summer programming, intervention remediation, and then a number of people mentioned that social, emotional strength, so from priority two, social, emotional wellness indicated higher academic success. And so it was really important, a number of people noted the fact that our students will do better academically if their social, emotional needs are addressed. So in thinking about the ideas moved to action in this one, the literacy tutors, as mentioned before, retaining our staff. Steve and Miranda did a presentation prior to this board meeting about decreasing enrollment numbers, so keeping our staff numbers in the places where we wanted to maintain the services that we are providing. Increasing numbers of students available in the high school academic strategies classes is an example. We also have something that's called Best Fit. When our team time in the various buildings, which is intervention time for students with specific skill sets, addressed during those times, specifically literacy. Student success meetings, our staff does work hard in each of the buildings to meet regularly to talk about student needs based upon the data they are seeing, both behaviorally, academically, socially, including absence attendance, to determine what students need supports and how they're going to best support them. We're also going to begin integrating individual tutoring using both a contract from an idea we got from the community from Great Lakes, so we were able to meet with them and set something up for this summer, so we're in process with that, as well as hiring our own teachers who are able and have the bandwidth in the space, because we know that our own teachers who have connections with our students in the space, because we know that our own teachers who have connections with our students can have a really positive impact and paying a stipend for that. And then incorporating our academic summer programming, which has historically been strong, but continuing to hire our teachers and our staff in order to run those summer programs to meet student needs. And then the academic coaches is an idea that comes up on this one too, that we had in the other one. And I should mention that while those are all ideas, the ESSER funds, ones that are highlighted, are ones that we wanted to indicate and point out because that's specifically what's in the application. And then the other ideas, again, we're using either different funding or they don't have a cost, and those are not exhaustive. There's lots of things the district is doing to support our students during this challenging time, and we will continue to be responsive and look at the data, specifically the data that's coming in this winter, this winter from winter benchmarking, our NWA cycle, to see what do our students actually need and how can we be responsive to that. So we've got scaffolds in place and are ready to respond when we get that winter data back to.
Thank you. Thank you, Cara and Steve and Miranda. Though we've lost a majority of our audience, this is extremely important and I appreciate the, the quick action in taking that feedback and really using those monies immediately for supports for our students. Does anyone have any questions or comments from Miranda, Steve, or Cara? Yeah, Jenny?
I just wrote down a couple of things and I don't know that they're necessarily questions, just things to highlight from the presentation, but I think it was slide six when we're talking about, is that the slide? The one that talks about retaining staff and offering competitive wages. And I know while that falls under operationalizing operations and not necessarily the board, I would continue to, huh, I don't know, I would just continue to encourage the board or encourage the administration to look at the competitive wages for literacy tutors. And I know that we heard a little bit about that earlier this year, but being that that is a field that I am engaged in regularly, I have explored some wages in neighboring communities and wonder if we might be able to consider that as a part of this since it is on the slides here tonight. Another thing that I noticed was the name coaches a couple of times through this, and there's an important distinction, coaching versus consulting. So paying, I guess, specific attention to the training that the people in those positions have so that they can support the work that is being done for students in ways that honor adult learners in their, in their roles versus consulting where it sometimes feels like things are being put, like another thing is being put on a, on a teacher's plate. And I, I just, I really, I wrote down here, the SEL equals higher academic success, and that is something that I know that I'm seeing firsthand this year. So I appreciate the extra attention for the social emotional component, when oftentimes the only thing that's published, you know, locally and statewide and nationally are our test scores. We know that those, for that whole child to be considered, we have to pay attention to those social emotional needs. So thank you for this presentation.
You're welcome. And just to clarify, the coaches as referenced in this presentation are student, direct student coaches, not adult coaches. So the SEL coaches would be working with students who are maybe struggling, are having trouble integrating into a classroom with behaviors that are conducive to both their success and their peers' success. And so they might get assigned that particular SEL coach to help them work through some of those things.
Oh, great. Yeah. So that's, that's an important distinction.
And then the academic coach would also is working directly with students that we identify who have maybe utilized all of the different resources that I showed you in that diagram, and now they need an adult mentor. While we prefer that person to be inside of the district, if we are unable to satisfy that because human capital is a real thing, then we do have a company that we can contract with so that that student has, if they opt in, has a mentor with whom they can touch base, work, academic strategies, help, and/or tutoring, or get connected to local resources.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate that distinction because I read that differently.
You're welcome.
Great, thanks. Anyway, yeah, Susan?
So I had a couple of questions. Is there like overlap of funds with the ESSER and IDA like funding? Because I know some of this, you know, with the literacy tutors and not necessarily that, but working with specifically the special education population?
Yeah, I will defer to Miranda to answer that question. Sorry, Miranda, I'm making you walk all the way over here. So the district does utilize IDA funds for special ed services and we use a lot of times a salary for those funding. And so in general, when, and when layering in these federal funds is, is one of those things that we have to be very careful that we keep with all the rules and things like that. There is discussion that there might be some ESSER fund, or sorry, some IDA extra funding that kind of comes down from that, but it's one of those things that we've heard talks about it and it will flow through an ISD role, and we don't know if, what the uses and what those, what our allocation would be because of, just as has it played out, we haven't gotten all of those things for that. So and some of that gets really extra tricky because we also have to worry with special education and how that funding works and maintenance of effort. It's kind of something that we continually always look at and how that those legal rules play out.
Thank you.
No problem.
So it's expanding as well to not only special education students, but general ed support, correct?
Yeah, I mean, in general, we have a lot of different funding sources that we always leverage as best we can for all of Celine area schools, and that's one of those things that we do get more funding for special ed students on a regular ongoing basis. So most of those things, even though they're eligible to put in grants, I might not put it in a grant because I would lose out on other funding in a different source. So we kind of are always weighing all of those options as these come down in the rule, different rules at play or may or may not stay in place or given waivers for kind of concepts. So it is always an ongoing thing that we're taking into the consideration, the bigger picture of our whole funding source as well and not to leave any money on the table that we could, you know, gain.
Awesome, thank you.
No problem.
And I guess one more question. Richard, what have you? So with the programs, some that we've already had in place and increasing programs as well, I know some of that included like summer academic programs. So I guess my, my question is, will this increase the amount of students that we're supporting? And or are we just kind of maintaining and supporting with funds? Are we expanding? So like that, maybe that middle student versus the ones that we've identified at a different tier?
Yeah, I think what you're asking is, can we support more students with the additional measures that we're putting in place? Yes. Like, so for example, the counselor at Heritage will be able to support the social worker who is currently in the building. It is a large student body population. It's a transitional point both into fourth grade and then again to sixth grade, so from fifth to sixth grade. And we've identified some behaviors there, you know, specifically as related to some of the behavioral things we've seen in other areas that haven't had the capacity, and that will really help the teachers, the administrators, and the social worker who's on staff there.
If I actually, I'd like to add on to the, our upper level kids, and we're at our high school level, we've already, we're already looking to expand tutoring options this summer with a contract with Great Lakes Tutoring to provide those options. And also the wave program, the virtual program, even though we're not necessarily doing it virtual, they have additional staff available this summer that we've been talking about using. So we're going to expand to another 40, 50, 60 students that really need that support at the high school level too.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Moving on to our section for action items, I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the February 8th, 2022 closed session for the purpose of review and consider the contents of an application for employment. So moved, Miller. Jenny, thank you. Second?
Second, Gerbi.
Thank you, Brad. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you. And just so everyone knows, obviously David joined us this evening as a, as a new trustee, so he wasn't present for that closed session on February 8th. For, for those who don't know, Secretary Jones will now pass out six copies of the, the closed meeting minutes. We'll take a minute to review those, we'll pass them back, she'll tally them to make sure that she has all six, and she'll shred those and give, Bediyanke, thank you, Bediyanke one copy to keep on file for one year, year which will be sealed. All right, Candace, just let me know when you have all of them back. All right, excellent. So we are voting to approve those as red. Motion made by Jenny, second by Brad. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
All right, thank you very much. I'd now like to please entertain a motion to approve the design and development bid as submitted by Millennium Energy Company and Lakehold Partners for HVAC project at Celine High School as recommended by Director of Operations Rex Clary.
Motion, Gerbi. Support, McVeigh.
Michael, support, thank you very much. Dr. Latch, any comments on this one?
Just real quick, we have, believe it or not, the high school's not that old, but these are pushing on mechanical controls that need to be replaced, using really outdated software, and it's a necessary component of the serious tree bond that we're in.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments for Director Latch? Susan?
Should this have an amount on it at this point or no?
Yeah, the, the amount is on the front of the, in your packet, Millennium Energy Company, 46,200, and Lakehold Partners, 36,271, to help provide support for a project that's going to range between 1.2 million and 1.9 million in, in some phases. So ultimately, this is for the cost for the people that are going to conduct the work.
Okay. I didn't know if it needed to be identified within the motion.
Okay, in, in the past, we have included it, so if we can have the, the minutes reflect the amounts that were in the board packet. All right, sounds good. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, 7-0. Onto our first discussion item of the evening, school of choice, Dr. Latch.
Okay, so all of you should have a handout that says draft 2022-23 school of choice guidelines. I'll give a general overview about what's different from last year. It, it's, are you finding it okay? Okay. Ultimately, we've had a similar pattern of saying that we have minimum of 10 openings at the various grade levels. With the exception of sixth grade and ninth grade, we've upped that to 20 minimum, and the rationale there is that these are transition points for the district historically, and we do want to signify to families that, that this is a, generally a good time to enter, enter the district. Not like there's a bad time, but that we've, we've seen students that were in different elementary programs come to the middle school in sixth grade. Same thing with students that may be in private schools up through eighth grade come into the high school in, in ninth grade. And so those are some of those natural transition points where we know we can sustain some additional enrollment. But we're also at the younger grades trying to sort of stabilize the size of our classes. So we may not be taking as many kindergarten students, for example, as we've had in the past. But ultimately, we will, what you do here is you take all the applications in and then we will go through the process of looking at numbers and what we feel that we can support. And then it would follow on the second page, it talks about the, the window of time where people apply would be between April 4th and May 3rd, with a lottery drawing occurring on May 9th. And then students that are notified would need to accept through the lottery and be enrolled by May 27th. So that would be the timeline around it all. Oh, and I will say, this is discussion, so the next meeting, we're talking about action, no, no action being taken.
Okay, yeah, thanks for the clarification, Susan.
Yes, I know there was questions about it, maybe earlier this year, no, last year, about the 10% cap. And I know we had looked at policy around that, so I didn't recall if that, if that was regarding like working with the unions or, do you recall that 10% cap and what, that's where that came from?
Right, the 10% cap was something that we have had listed in the past. It's not really a policy per se, but it's something that we've been working towards within that range. And last year, we talked about not necessarily including that, and we could revisit that. You know, there is this balancing act of where are we at? Are we at, you know, eight, nine percent, 10%? And so last year, we said that we were going to flex that so that it's around that area but not have that specific hard cap. We could revisit it if trustees felt that we should. It was more guidance, it wasn't, it wasn't really, in other words, we, we hadn't enacted it in any policy at that point.
Thank you. I think that's good to, to clarify because I know that came up from community members and stuff, so that's helpful.
I think he was looking down here at me when he said that. Maybe not, but I, I appreciate the 10% cap because I, in, as much as I would love for us to, you know, welcome, welcome students for a variety of reasons to Celine schools, I also want to be mindful of the deficit that it creates in many of our neighboring districts, especially those who, you know, it would leave a lasting impact on the students who, who are staying in those districts. And we've seen that already in our, in our county. So the 10% target, I guess, is, is something that I'm comfortable with, and if we were to, you know, change that drastically, I would hope that it would come back as a discussion for us.
So I'll echo those exact thoughts. So I would, I'm comfortable with the 10% cap as well, but I would like to see us being mindful of our, of our neighbors and our surrounding districts and our programs and making sure that our students are, you know, I want, I want Celine schools to support Celine students as much as we possibly can, right? So, so that's that.
All right, oh, yeah, Candace, go ahead.
Yep, quick question about how we advertise the schools of choice. So I know we put it on our website, but are there other ways that we get the word out about, about our lottery process?
Yeah, it's a good question. We really haven't advertised very much in the past. We have had some discussions about, you know, whether we should advertise more. However, you know, that's, that's where you get into the whole cap piece. We're kind of hovering around that eight, nine, 10%. We're kind of hovering around that eight, nine, ten percent anyway. And, I mean, if we're advertising and potentially encouraging a lot of people to apply, and then a lot don't get in, it may be worse that we're kind of insinuating that we have all these openings that we don't really have. But, so to answer your question, we haven't advertised in the past? So this would be, I think, a greater conversation for a future year, that if we really were looking to expand here, we'd have to opt out of that cap and kick up advertising. So even, right now, we're not advertising, and we're kind of hovering around our cap, I guess is what I'd say to that.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, Susan?
Can you clarify the lottery process and how, I know there's some perceptions about that, and so I would just like you to explain that?
Yeah, to clarify how that works, we do have something called sibling preference. That's one thing that I think is important to mention, and that would be that, okay, so let's say, for example, a school of choice family has a third grader in the district, but also now has a kindergarten coming into the district, potentially. We're trying not to get into this thing where we separate families in that regard, so that that kindergarten student would have preference first within the lottery before the general school of choice kindergarteners get selected. So there's that element. But there's also the element of the lottery means you're taking kids in order of how they come in, and whether they, whether a student is, has an IEP, or, you know, they're still treated in that order they come in. The one exception to that is if students have been suspended or expelled from another school district, we have the right not to accept them coming in. So that's generally the process. And what happens is we take all the students' names, and we literally pull them out of a hat and give them a number in order. And then when we tell Mandy Ruckey, our enrollment secretary, how many specific students we're going to take for each grade level, she looks at the numbers on the, you know, cards, and then contacts those families, and will say, "You have until X date to enroll." And for those that do not, in theory, we give those spots to other people. Because there is, you know, capture rate means that there are people that apply to multiple districts for their students. And, you know, traditionally or historically, we've captured between sixty and seventy percent of the students that apply, but it's definitely not a hundred percent. And so that's how that whole process works.
Yeah, that's helpful. I do see that there is a lottery drawing, which is, you know, May 9th, and so families could go to that, and it's a public, transparent process.
Yeah, it's public, transparent. There was one year that we did a Zoom live, I believe. I'm trying to think back on this, but historically, we always have it in person in the Liberty Board of Ed room. And I would anticipate we're going to do that same process again, unless it were, like, some big COVID spike potentially would move it online, but we haven't done that, unless we've had to.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions or comments, let's move on to our second discussion item, Policy Committee update. Vice President McVeigh?
Thank you. The Policy Committee did meet today. We don't have a lot to announce, but to the rest of you, I want to share that there are, the Wells Fargo wagon has arrived, and we now have Neola updates, thank goodness. And we'll be reviewing those over the next few days and then getting, you know, performing a bit of triage and figuring out which ones have to get before the committee. The Policy Committee today reviewed Policy 2340 Field and Other District Sponsored Trips based on revisions proposed by President Sevan. We'll talk about those at a future meeting. We are still waiting on Administrative Guidelines Manual from Neola. And we are also going to be, we put a pin in several policies that we want to look forward to aligning between the policies and our board operating procedures. And those are the way we fill vacancies, the process for onboarding, organizational meeting that happens once a year, superintendent evaluation committees, especially ad hoc committees. And once again, we're going to have to take a look at some of the elements of the public participation policy, thanks to our public participators. The next meeting will be March 22nd, unless there are birthdays or things like that coming up. I'm not picking on anyone in particular, but, you know, we're aiming for March 22nd, and I've got a lot of homework to do and a lot of materials to get to the committee's hands before then. So looking forward to it.
All right. Any questions or comments for the Policy Committee? Susan?
So the birthday that Michael is referring to is my daughter turns, turned six today, so. But we, we had a birthday weekend, and we made bath bombs yesterday, so I made up for it. So happy birthday, Ariana.
Happy birthday.
Where's the cake?
Yeah.
I like cake, and I'm hungry. Okay, moving forward, Julian, we respectfully released him so he could complete homework and get on with his high school life. Administration updates.
Okay, three fast ones. Great job for Middle School Science Olympiad team this weekend. They were at University of Michigan, and they compete in all sorts of different competition areas. But the ones I saw some videos of were they made these really cool electric planes, and they were flying them all over the various buildings at U of M. And so Lisa Spencer's the coach there. She does a tremendous job. And they actually don't have the results yet, but she did pass on that they had a wonderful experience at the University of Michigan this past weekend. Also, I want to congratulate our middle school student, Shyla Smith, who will be with us at the March 22nd Board of Education meeting to talk about this, but was one of two Just Write Michigan Junior Contest winners for her creative words and written expression. So we're going to hear more about that, which is exciting. And then finally, just want to thank the continuous support from the Foundation for Celineary Schools that again has supported thirty-one grants this past year for ninety-nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, which is a credit to the foundation and the wonderful support of the community.
All right, excellent. Any trustee comments tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, Michael?
I, for the rest of the trustees, I want to amplify the message that you received about the Threat Assessment Protocol. The Washington Association of School Boards is doing a Zoom session. That's for all of us. I'm sure the superintendents know about it. But it's just good to be up to speed and learn some new terminology and find out more about it. Kelly Haveland from the WISD is going to be reviewing that with us, and I'm looking forward to that. This Thursday, 7:00 PM, Zoom.
All right, anyone else? Yeah, Brad?
I have one item. I'll try to be quick. So I don't know where our masking conversations will go as we go forward, but I want to take a moment to acknowledge the toll that mask enforcement has had on educators over the past two years and especially this year. I know what you've been through. I'm only one voice. I'm only one high school educator, but it has not been easy. Hard work is not done, and I know that we all have done what we've had to do to do the best job we could to keep our students safe. And, but I know that for me personally, enforcing masks has been an immense challenge, and it's been something that has been hard on me, and so I can imagine it has been on my colleagues. You know, I have, I have colleagues who, quite frankly, I am no longer friends with because of masks. You know, there are families who have eighteen years of established relationships, and those things are severely strained now. And guess what I would say is this? I just want to acknowledge your, that this has been difficult. I want to acknowledge that it's been hard for you. I want to acknowledge that, like, you know, that in our profession, you have done the things that we've asked you to do, and I'm thankful for your commitment as a board member and as a human being. And, you know, and I want to just say that. And I want our equity, you know, groups and our various groups in our community to continue to engage with us and continue to engage with the Washtenaw County Health Department so that we can, and with our state and our local officials so that we can know how to best personalize and better, best know how to understand your experiences in our schools. And I just wanted to acknowledge that quickly.
Thanks, Brad. Happy Public Schools Week to you as an educator, Jenny, and I know, working in education, be nice to staff. Agreed. Anyone else with any, yeah, Candace, go ahead.
Yeah, last week, I had the opportunity to participate in the National ESEA Conference, and it was excellent. It was my first in-person conference since the pandemic started. So it, there were a lot of ideas, and I look forward to just bringing those back to the various committees, Finance Committee and Wellness. Great ideas for SEL, Staff Wellness, for utilization of SIR funds, et cetera. So lots of ideas from across the country that I look forward to sharing with my colleagues. And also just wanted to comment on some things that have been said online about me and my family. There were some comments about whether or not what I shared during the last board meeting was true in terms of what happened to my son, being called the N-word. And yes, it is true, and there was not more to the story. There were comments that were saying, "Oh, there must be more to the story," or "We don't, she didn't give us the full story." That was the full story. My son was called the N-word. It was corroborated. The child did admit to it. So I just wanted to state that, to clarify for the record. And there were also comments that said that my, one of my children was the one that were passing around the N-word pass, which happened at the middle school several months ago. That was not true. My child did not do that. My children did not have anything to do with that. Neither did anybody in my family or anyone that was related to me. So just wanted to clarify those two things. I think it's really important that, you know, if you have a question or you're wondering something about me or my family, feel free to reach out. My email address is jonesk2@celineschools.org. Feel free to reach out. I love to connect with our community and answer any questions anyone may have. That's it.
Thank you, Candace. We support you and hear what you're saying. And while we are elected officials, our children are not, period. And so appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, Susan?
Yes, so quick update about the Wellness Committee. There was a meeting recently. So I'm getting David up to date, because they are joining the Wellness Committee, and I'm coming off of that. But they are creating a survey. And so especially with the students, finding out who their go-to person is, right? And so we had talked about what other surveys have been done to see if they can collect some data from, you know, pre-pandemic and to, you know, what's going on the two and a half years. So I thought that was really great that they're developing that. And then Still Waters Counseling is wanting to partner with the school for different programs, which may be, you know, professional development for staff, working with and supporting students, mindfulness series. So a lot of different options thrown out there, so excited to see what comes out of that.
Great. Anyone else? David, you want to say anything? You're first. You don't have to.
I may as well. Once again, thank you to everybody. It's a delight to be here, and I'm looking forward to working with everybody and getting up to speed on all of my new committee appointments. It's an exciting first meeting to be on the board. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda. The following are offered as part of the consent agenda. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. I'd like to please entertain a motion and move to authorize the following items as part of our consent agenda. A, approval of the Board of Education regular meeting minutes for February 8th, 2022. B, approval of the Board Finance Committee meeting minutes of February 8th, 2022. C, approval of payment of the General Fund Accounts payable February 22nd, 2022 in the amount of seven hundred and forty-one thousand eighty-three dollars and fifty-four cents. D, receive and file our Human Resources Report. And E, approval of overnight and/or out-of-state field trips as submitted by Superintendent Latch. Field trips number eighty-three, high school baseball tournament, Columbus, Ohio, May thirteenth through fourteenth, 2022. Number two, field trip number eighty-two, high school baseball tournament, Indianapolis, Indiana, March twenty-ninth, probably March twenty-ninth through thirtieth, I'm assuming, 2022. Item three, field trip number eighty-four, high school rowing, Sarasota, Florida, March twenty-eighth through April first, 2022. Number four, field trip number eighty-one, high school wrestling competition, Detroit, Michigan, March third through fifth, 2022. And field trip number eighty-five, Science Olympiad Competition, Allendale, Michigan, February twenty-fifth through twenty-six, 2022. Could I please have a motion?
So moved, McVeigh.
Thank you, Michael. Second?
Support, Susan.
Thank you, Susan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. In closing, Dr. Latch, any items on our next agenda?
Yeah, we will have a literacy report, and then Continue to Learn update with the updated Washtenaw County Health Department guidance, and then School of Choice action item.
Okay, and we will be back at our boardroom home for that one. This is our second opportunity for public comment. Please, a member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. I do have one student form. I'm seeing fewer people in the audience, so we might call a few names. I'll call it. If they've left for the evening, we'll understand and move on to the next. Caroline Pangillian, I hope I pronounced that correct. I don't know if we have any students in the audience. Seeing none, we will move forward. Megan Gunnerson, parent. And Megan, that mic might be off, so just toggle it on. Thanks, and you know the cards.
So actually, I just have some questions or some feedback, because I was so happy when I had asked for a little bit of feedback more publicly than through an email, and then Dr. Latch was kind enough to, like, give stats because I feel, or numbers, because it gave me more confidence as my kids went back to school every day. So I thought maybe if I asked it here, I might get some, somewhere. I do have a question. When you write your letter tomorrow, I couldn't understand if you said about the young fives or the preschoolers, if the staff has to mask or if the little people are also masking. And so I just wanted to reiterate, a speech pathologist wishes who couldn't be here tonight, and I totally agree with her, little people, they need to see our lips to see how we make the F sound and the TH sound and those types of things. So I know that there was some, we always talk K through twelve, K through twelve, but these little people, they need to see your mouth. And I've had four kids in speech before, so by no means am I a speech pathologist, but I'm really good at, like, over-enunciating. So if you could just maybe put that in your letter, if this includes the little people, and if you have any gray area, maybe talk to your speech pathologist. And then I had a question directly related to the meeting makeup. So back in the day when we were all locked in our houses, we were able to use forums like Zoom and others where there was a chat function, and people could, like, write in a question. And I see that there are five members of the team here that aren't directly related to the board, and maybe one or two of those people could present those questions for people who can't be here. I really do think it's a, it's, you know, we use this word equity all the time. People can't get here because of transportation. They can't get here because of childcare. Their ability to come, just time management, and their own general health, perhaps. You know, I know you livestream on YouTube, but maybe we could reactivate but maybe we could reactivate either the Facebook chat one or, I can't remember the other one. But I know that we've used it. We used it just two weeks ago with Dr. Latch when we talked about what to do with SRFunding. So I know it's a possibility. And then my next statement would be, you know, the surveys that come out, especially this last one, like, they're kind of confusing. And I use surveys all the time in healthcare. Mostly I'm on the receiving end. They get sent out by third-party companies, and then we get them back. The colors are brash. The questions are difficult, and there's no numeric. Like, we always try to use a 1 through 4, so you have to make a decision. You can't sit in the land of 3. And then always some room for a narrative down below, which of course we read and take in too. But I really feel like as we're talking about surveys here, and we've used them before, and then the last board meeting or last month's board meeting where we talked about all the points on the star, everybody who came up was like, "We're going to survey parents. We're going to survey parents." Well, maybe we need to look at how those surveys are going out and how speedy people can go through them because we write our surveys at between a 5th and an 8th grade education level. And I know that this is a very genteel suburb, and, you know, everybody here is, you know, considers themselves highly educated, and we use great vocabulary with our kids. We need to maybe think about the general audience. Thank you, Ms. Jones.
All right, thank you, Megan. Next, Tiffany Alexander, parent.
There we go. Hi, so first of all, I want to start off by saying I really do respect everybody as, I don't agree with your new plan, mostly because I don't see where there's any details to this plan for me to agree with. But I respect that everybody here actually does care about the kids, at least up there. I don't think that's reflected in the community in the room at all. And also, when you are listening to the community, we keep hearing over and over again this thing that, "Listen to your community. Listen to your community." We are also the community. People may not want us here, but we are also the community. And there are, to a point that was just made, that I actually strongly agree with. I don't know if there are resources for it, but a great many special needs parents wanted to be here today, but they felt it was futile, that it was not going to matter. And they don't have childcare. They can't just call a babysitter. So that is one thing I think people should take into consideration. So on this plan, I guess what I really mostly have are questions. One is, I'm confused on how everybody's phrasing the Washington County Health Department's mandates. It, I, the Washington, we were not in line with the Washington County Health Department. Washington County Health Department was in line with Celine. You guys created that plan and mandated masks inside the school before they did, well before they did. So I don't see how we're in line with them. No, they were in line with us. Now, the medical recommendations haven't changed. What they've said is we're not going to legally remove, cause you any problems, but we still really think you should do this. So following their guidelines means we're following the medical guidelines. And the medical guidelines still strongly recommend masks. So that part is confusing to me. Now, moving on to being responsive in this plan. Because if we can be responsive and flexible, which is what I understood about the other plan and really liked about it, then I can see, like, not right now with the numbers so high, but going mask optional when we have an ability to be flexible, I don't see where the flexibility is. What was stated, and this is my understanding, if I'm wrong, I am glad to find out otherwise, that it is going to be strongly recommended for them to mask, okay? But in the case of like Pleasant Ridge, where the numbers are really high, so now we're going to communicate to people, make sure the education people, that these people already, everybody already knows. We already know, and everybody's made up their minds. So, but then the response was going to be, "We're still going to strongly recommend." That's not adjusting. That's doing the exact same thing as was already stated. So I don't understand that. Our, is the plan that we can reinforce masks or we're just going to strongly recommend? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tiffany. Next, Jennifer Scarpotti, parent.
So I had something to say, but I gave my time in the beginning. And obviously, things have changed with the masks. But actually, the Director of the MDHHS, Elizabeth Hurdle, has said, "Individuals and families should assess their own risk for COVID-19 exposure and transmission and make choices about when it makes sense to wear masks." So I agree that we should not be making our children wear masks. It should be a parent's choice. I'm a former teacher, and when I was in the classroom, I relied on my partnerships with parents because I understood that parents know their children best. I also understood that our partnership and my respect of a parent's place in a child's life helped me be a more effective educator in the lives of my former students. As a parent now, I ask you yourselves, do you know students better than their own parents? Do you know their favorite food, their favorite color, their dog's name? I used to have to keep track of dogs' names. Do you know that they love dominos or magic tricks with cards? You don't. So it has, we have to stop being oppositional and start partnering again. It will be rewarded in academic gains. I know this as an educator. True educators, not agenda followers, know this. So again, thank you for taking the masks off our children and letting them breathe and allowing us the choice. Masking should be that choice. And whether someone chooses to mask or not, that choice should be respected, period. When the masks come off March 1st, let's all be mindful of each other's choice and practice being kinder than necessary at all times. That said, Mr. McVeigh, you owe this community an apology. Any promoting of violence with your throat punch comment is not at all acceptable. We just had a horrible fight in the high school, and violence for any reason is never an option or an acceptable response. Think about what you say because words matter. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Our next public comment is Holly Vilade. I'm not sure if she's here. Okay. Holly Vilade? Okay, all right, yeah, no, no, no. Sorry, no, Holly. And Holly left for the evening. Is that right? Okay, okay. I'm going to say not present. Next is Kevin Savich. Okay, I'm going to say Kevin's not present. Moving on, Connie Creach. All right, not present. Moving on, Cory Balo. And you'll be our last public comment for the evening, so you can just toggle it off whenever you're done, whenever you're ready.
Cool. All right. So this is my statement, and I did have a statement prepared for earlier. But after listening to the 7th grader say everything I would have said, and she said it better than I would have been able to say it, I chose to read the poem instead because I felt it was very powerful and I felt everybody should hear it. I also didn't realize the rule changed in December, so good to know. Anyway, I am a white, middle-class, middle-aged, heterosexual, cisgender woman. And I am on the DEIAC. And I am on there because I have really good intentions. I want Celine to be a better place. And so with that in mind, I am very interested in the education plan that we have or are going to have about the masks and respecting others as we are yet to be successful in teaching kids in the middle school to stop calling their classmates the N-word. So with that in mind, how do we think that we can educate and expect kids to respect those who are either not wearing or wearing masks? And so therefore, I hope, no, I expect, that the education covers all forms of bullying and hate speech. Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Our next meeting, the next regular Board of Education meeting, will be held on March 8th, 2022, at 6:30 PM at the Liberty Boardroom. I'd now like to please entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting for February 22nd, 2022, at 10:23 PM. Miller will make that motion. Thank you, Jenny. Second?
East Up Support.
All right, Susan?
Oh, second, yeah.
All right, thank you, Susan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 7-0. We are adjourned 10:23.